So I think we will come to order. Sharon, can you call the roll, please?
You're muted, Sharon.
No, she's not.
Councilmember Wangert, here. Councilmember Richards.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Here.
Here.
Alf.
Here. Okay, first up will be, our first item will be oral communications. If anyone wishes to address the council on an item not on tonight's agenda, they may do so now. Carter, I see your hand up. Do you want to, do you have an oral communication?
And Carter, you may need to unmute at your end, but you're unmuted at our end.
Okay, great. Can you guys?
Yes.
I read the tonight's agenda, you know, with interest to find out, you know, what the plans are for reopening, you know, the planning and building departments. And I was intrigued to not find a word reopening, you know, the building and planning. It's really causing me and my clients a lot of distress to not have the building and planning department accepting new applications and issuing permits and approvals for the, you know, projects that were submitted, you know, before the COVID crisis. We're 12 weeks in and it's not looking good for me. A lot of, you know, the compensation, you know, that we derive is, you know, upon approvals. And it's really causing us some desperate times.
Okay, Jeremy, do you want to address that?
Yeah, sure. Carter, it's good to hear your voice, first of all. A couple meetings ago, the council reviewed, actually, I'm sorry, it was last meeting, reviewed reopening plans. As part of that conversation, we shared with the council that we are planning to allow submittal of applications very shortly. Our team has been working through the process to make that a possibility. And I'm hopeful that we're able to do that very soon. As you know, we're very small staff and some of the technology we didn't possess in order to make that a reality. So we're going to start doing that pretty quickly and you'll be one of the first people to know, Carter. So I appreciate the comments.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, if there are no more public comments, then I will, I, our next, two items are proclamations, which I will read. Okay, the first is a proclamation in recognition of Gatepath's 100th anniversary in San Mateo County. Proclamation, "The town of Portola Valley celebrates Gatepath's 100 years of serving the San Mateo County community. Whereas Gatepath, a nonprofit established in 1920 to improve the health and welfare of children with developmental disabilities in San Mateo County, is celebrating its milestone 100th anniversary in 2020. And whereas, over the years, has developed a large portfolio of services that today supports individuals with special needs and developmental disabilities of all ages from infants to seniors. And whereas, Gatepath, with 300 dedicated staff members, provides direct services at 13 locations in both Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties. And whereas, Gatepath, now one of the largest nonprofits servicing the disabled community on the peninsula, impacts more than 15,000 families, caregivers, and individuals each year with its programs. And whereas, Gatepath's lifespan of services include developmental screenings for children, early intervention in pediatric therapy, inclusive preschools, social and recreational opportunities for youth, employment, training, and placement, as well as community integration and independent living skills for adults. And whereas, Gatepath is very proud to celebrate 100 years of creating a world where people of all abilities are accepted, respected, and included in all aspects of society, from the classroom to the workplace, and is committed to ensuring inclusive opportunities are available to the disabled population for decades to come. Therefore, I, Jeff Alfs, Mayor of the town of Portola Valley, on behalf of the town council, do hereby salute Gatepath for its work to empower people with special needs and developmental disabilities to achieve their full potential through innovative, inclusive programs and community partnerships. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Portola Valley to be affixed here too, this 20, sorry, this date is wrong, this 10th day of June 2020. And I believe we have a representative from Gatepath with us tonight. Sahela, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much, Mayor Alfs, for giving us the proclamation to honor our long-lasting commitment to serving your community. We're really, really thankful. I have a brief presentation, less than five minutes. If you allow me, I just want to give a little bit of background about what we are doing.
And I should have it on the screen for everyone and just let me know which slide to go to next.
Beautiful. Thank you so much again, Mayor Alf and the council members to giving us this opportunity. We're very excited to be here with you today. My name is Sahela Muzayyan and I am the Vice President at Gatepath and Abilities United. Next slide shows that we are a nonprofit agency. Our headquarters is in Redwood City. We have a total of 13 campuses. The closest ones to you are our Redwood City and Palo Alto campuses. This year, as Mayor, you mentioned, we are very proud celebrating our 100 years of serving people with developmental disabilities and their families in the Bay Area. We have 300 dedicated staff, serving more than 1,200 individuals every day. The next slide shows our programs. Our programs are from serving, in our programs, we're serving people from first to senior age. We offer infant program, inclusive preschools, family resource centers. And for our adult programs, we have day program, community connections, independent living skills, we have a college pass, employment services. Next slide shows our mission. Everything we do, all our communication, all our services are guided by our mission, vision, and values. We are really focused to help people to achieve their highest, fullest potential. And in the next slide, you will see the history of community connections in your area. As I mentioned, we are celebrating our 100 years of impact in our community. Our services include serving some Portola Valley residents. In addition, we have been partnering with Woodside Prairie School, which this year, we were gonna do it in March because of all the COVID situation, we couldn't do it. And we're very happy about everything we're doing. We are hoping to expand our services, our partnership, and our relationship with the beautiful town of Portola Valley. And that's why I'm here today to tell you who we are, what we are doing. And in the next slide, you will see few businesses around your area. We have over 200 business partners and our clients are doing absolutely great job in various locations. Our next slide shows you a little bit about our last year. We had a fantastic last year. The Abilities United and Gatepath joined forces and merged together to even better serve our community. And we were very excited about this. The merge absolutely made us very, very strong, both financially and operationally. The merge also enabled us to offer salary increases for frontline staff. And we were really looking forward for a strong fiscal year. However, like many other nonprofits, we have been hit hard by coronavirus crisis. And we are facing, among other things going down, the prospect of cuts in our funding by the state. Despite all changes, we have been continuing our services virtually to our very well-deserving clients and their families. And next slide shows our current situation. That, like any other nonprofits these days, we are facing a lot with uncertainties. And rules are not clear, procedures are not clear. However, we're very glad that we have a very important mission. We're really focusing on serving our clients and their families. And we have increased our communication with the families, with the people we serve, with our staff, with our community a lot during these challenging times. And the next slide is how you can support us more. I know that, Mayor, it is in your priority as well, developing some affordable housing for people with developmental disabilities. And their staff will be fantastic. Also, any employment volunteering opportunities for us and any kind of funding. And finally, I'm, the last slide, I want to invite you to our exciting name change celebration on June 20th. Our community doesn't know, you're the first one knowing, it's about the name change. We really want to show community that with this merge, and we wanted to really serve better our deserving families. And I hope you make it. It's June 20th at 5 o'clock. And I cannot thank you again for giving us chance to be here. And thank you for everything you have done in the past and we're looking for a new future. Thank you so much again.
Well, thank you for all the work that you have done with Gatepath and Abilities United, both great organizations. And we're pleased to give the proclamation and love to look for other ways to work together. So, thank you. Our next item is a second proclamation. Is the town of Portola Valley designated, designating June 2020 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, Questioning, Intersex, and Two-Spirit Pride Month. Whereas, the town of Portola Valley is honored to kick off Pride Month and celebrate members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, and two-spirit community who live and work here. And whereas, the town aligns with countywide initiatives and policies that advance the LGBTQI2S community's journey toward equality and strives to create a safe, inclusive society in which all community members are treated fairly, with dignity, and respect in all settings. And whereas, the San Mateo County Health System's Pride Initiative has advocated for a welcoming environment for LGBTQI2S people and have made important, who have made important, varied, and lasting contributions to San Mateo County. And whereas, the town of Portola Valley takes pride in the fact that we are a vibrant, diverse community and proudly join San Mateo County and our neighboring communities as we strive to build a stronger, better state and nation for all residents. And whereas, as June 2020 marks the 51st anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City, the town of Portola Valley is dedicated to continuing efforts to ensure equality and respect for all. And now, therefore, the Town Council of the town of Portola Valley, California, hereby designates June 2020 Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, Questioning, Intersex, and Two-Spirit Pride Month. Be it further resolved, the town of Portola Valley urges all residents to join in recognizing the culture, accomplishments, and contributions of LGBTQI2S people and to work to help advance the equality of LGBTQI2S people. Thank you. And I believe we have Craig Weisner joining us from the County LGBTQ Committee. Correct me if I've got that wrong, but Craig, you want to say a few words?
Thank you very much. And I'm so glad to be here, following Gatepath. Just a quick mention, my goddaughter, who has Down syndrome, her life has been immeasurably improved by the programs that Abilities United and Gatepath have provided for her 21 years. So, so glad to see you proclaiming them tonight. So, good evening. I'm County Commissioner Craig Weisner. On behalf of the San Mateo County LGBTQ Commission, I want to thank the town of Portola Valley for celebrating June as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. As you said, 51 years ago, when I was just nine years old, do the math, the people at the Stonewall Inn rose up in what was called at the time, yes, riots, to demand change. 57 years ago, Byrd Ruston, a gay African-American man, helped to organize the historic March on Washington, at which Martin Luther King spoke about his dream of a different America, one where he imagined little black boys and girls would be holding hands with little white girls and little white boys. My friends, I saw a glimmer of Martin Luther King's dream come alive in the last two weeks as hundreds of thousands of Americans, representing every part of the beautiful rainbow color of spectrum all human bodies exhibit, as they joined together to demand, once again, that we rise up to overcome systemic racism, homophobia, transphobia, and all other forms of prejudice and oppression that hold people back from fully and freely participating in the more perfect union our founders envisioned. Your proclamation today speaks volumes. It says that Portola Valley treasures every single person who lives and works here, no matter how we represent our gender or who we love. Thank you. I look forward to working together with all of you in the coming weeks and months and years to continue working to further Martin Luther King's dream. Because at this moment, for too many people, our rainbow flag only represents our aspirations of freedom, not everyone's reality. Your proclamation tonight takes us one step further. As a gay man who was just nine years old during the Stonewall uprising, I'm incredibly grateful for your support. We all are. Thank you.
Craig, thank you for your leadership. And I believe all my council members will join me in saying we are proud to support the cause and to issue this proclamation. And thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. I have a hand up from Judy Murphy. Did you want to say something, Judy?
Nope, sorry. I was just arriving. I was just arriving. I didn't have my hand up.
Okay, okay, no worries. Okay. Well, if no one else has anyone to say on either of the proclamations, then we can move on. And thank you, Greg, again. Okay, take care. Okay. We are now at the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they want to pull from the consent agenda?
Mayor Alfs, I have a request actually to pull item, sorry, item.
Six.
Six, thank you. Thank you.
Item six.
There is a, there's a typo in the staff report that indicates that there was council action this year related to an amendment to my contract. That the typo is in the discussion and also in the resolution. It should read March 1st, 2019, not March 1st, 2020. And just want to emphasize that, you know, did not ask for any compensation this year. And, and just to make sure that everyone is reading this correctly, the attachment one is the resolution for amendment four. And attachment two, which is on pages 38, 39, is amendment three. That's last year's. So, just to make sure there was no confusion there. Last year, Ann was mayor. So, just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that. I actually did see that and then I forgot about it after reading it. Okay, so we probably still need to pull that item and, and vote on it separately with those corrections. But does anyone else want to pull anything else off of the consent agenda? If not, I can take a motion to approve items three, four, five, and seven.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann, seconded by John. Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wangert.
Aye.
Councilmember Richards.
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Ann, did you want to?
Yeah, Jeff, just in terms of the other item that Jeremy just referenced, six, I think it may make sense to bring that back to the next meeting to clarify, rather than trying to amend it tonight, because I think there was a lot of confusion from some in the public as well.
Yeah.
I think we should pull it and reintroduce it rather than amend it, try and amend it on the fly to make sure we have it fully correct.
Mary Ann, yeah.
And to be clear, Jeremy did not receive a raise and Cara did not raise her rates, correct?
Right.
Well, we just approved item seven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But.
Sorry.
Your point is well taken, but neither, neither the town manager nor the town attorney have raised rates or increased our salary this year.
Thank you.
Pointing that out as well. Okay, so we will, we will continue item six and we'll bring it back on June the 24th. Okay. Okay, that concludes the consent agenda. Next up, we have a committee report from Trails and Paths. Gary, take it away. You're muted. Oh, there you go.
I'm here to present the 2019 annual report for the Trails and Paths Committee. 2019 was a pretty typical year for us, unlike 2020, which is turning out to be so far a very atypical year for us. And so I'll stick to just the 2019 issues. I think we'll have a lot more to talk about next year when we do the 2020 annual report. But if you do have questions related to some of the stuff that's going on right now, I'm happy to talk about those as well. In 2019, we had nine members. We had a full committee for the, for the entire year. We held 11 meetings, which is a record for us, close to a record. So, we had a full agenda at most of those meetings. And I'm going to summarize what we worked on, what we accomplished. If you do want some more details, just go ahead and stop me and I'll try to flesh it out. But I'm going to stay at a high level here so that we don't take up too much of your time. So in 2019, the Trails and Paths Committee, as usual, would spend a portion of each meeting working with Public Works to identify trail maintenance issues. We would try to identify them, prioritize them, and work with Public Works to make sure that whatever trail maintenance issue would come up was resolved properly and to the committee's satisfaction. So we worked very closely with Howard and his team on that. And that takes almost about half of our meetings each, each time that we do meet. You know, we have quite a few miles of trails in town and there's always something that needs to be fixed. But an example of what we worked on last year was, you know, we stopped spraying pre-emergence on our trails. I think it's two years ago now. And so we, we took photographs of the trails at certain locations at certain times during the year so we could kind of get an idea of how, what the effect was with not spraying pre-emergence anymore. And, and I think the good news is, is that, well, you know, most people don't notice. So, so we don't really receive a lot of feedback that we're not doing it. But, but what we did notice and the people who are on the trails often noticed is that in certain areas, they get overgrown. And in some cases, you can't see the trail. So Howard and his staff have gone from a yearly annual routine of spraying pre-emergence to a yearly annual routine of mowing certain trails so that the weeds don't get too tall. And, you know, one of the concerns with the weeds getting tall is, I'm sure many of you know, in this town, we have a lot of ticks. And they like to hang out at the very top of the grasses and when you walk by, they like to jump right on your pants. And, you know, I go out sometimes, I'll come back with ten ticks on. And so we're concerned about that. You know, we, we support the not spraying. However, we, I don't think we completely dialed in how to mitigate the side effects of that. One being that some of the trails are overgrown. And two, when they are overgrown, you get ticks. So that's something we're still looking at. And I know Howard's done a very good job at responding to maintenance requests that have to do with overgrown trails, just because of the ticks. Last year, we worked with the folks up on the ranch to place new maps and new signs on the Coal Mine Ridge Trails. And the idea there was that the folks at the ranch were kind of sensitive to, well, there's a lot more users of the trails, so they're sensitive to people going off trail. They want to keep people on the trails. And they want to make sure that they communicate to users of the trails where dogs are allowed and where they're not allowed, and where bicycles are allowed and not allowed. What we took away from the work with the folks up the ranches is they're very sensitive to the, to the open space, which we support. I mean, they, they want to keep it as pristine and natural as possible. They want the wildlife, the flora fauna to flourish. And so we support that. What we're not terribly supportive of is a lot of signs, throwaway maps because people might litter. But so far, we found out that the littering has been to a minimum. So, good news on that front. And I think we all agreed on a set of signs. Perhaps some of you have seen them up there. They look a little different than our regular trail signs, but they do communicate well the points that the folks at the ranch wanted to, to get across. And so I think at the end of the day, it all worked out pretty good. We don't really have hard data yet as to how effective those new signs and maps have been, but we, we think it's been going pretty good. So, so more, more next year on that one. Also, last year, the Trails Committee worked in conjunction with the Conservation Committee on rerouting a portion of Portola Trail into the Spring Down open space and to connect to the Spring Down Trail. And the idea there was that the Conservation Committee wanted to open up some of the vegetation on Portola Road so that you could have a better vantage point into Spring Down because it's kind of a cornerstone. It's a, it's a, it's a beautiful open space that we want people to be able to see and to admire. Trails did not want to remove vegetation because since Portola Trail runs right along the road, we wanted the buffer to reduce the sound that the trail users receive from the road. So, we reached a compromise there where we created a new entrance into Spring Down. So now, from Portola Trail, you can enter very close to the parking lot by the tennis courts. But then you can also enter on the very southern end of Spring Down as it fronts with Portola Trail. And so you, as a user of Portola Trail, you can get away from the road by entering in Spring Down, take a nice stroll around the loop, and exit back out there by the tennis courts. So that was all done last year. We worked with Conservation Committee again on Paso de El Royo, the road that runs along PV Garage. We, we had a request from residents to put in some screening along that road to screen out the garage and the parking lot. So we needed to move the trail. There was some discussion about maybe eliminating the trail. We were not supportive of that. So what we ended up doing was moving the trail a little bit closer to the road, creating a larger buffer for the screening to go in. Conservation Committee did a great job at creating some screening that did not look like screening. It looked more natural than a, just a wall of vegetation. So, that all got done last year. Our signature event every year, it's our public outreach event from the Trails and Paths Committee is the Horse Fair. And 2019, we held our horse fair on May 9th, it was Mother's Day weekend. It was very successful, very popular. You know, the horse. Mother's Day weekend. It was very successful, very popular. You know, the Horse Fair is half education of horses and the horse community and the horse culture. And the other half is really just fun family events where people can come out with their family and ride on a carriage. You don't get to do that very often in this town any longer. Used to do it all the time. They get to ride on ponies. They get to do arts and crafts. There's lots of fun events. And we've been holding this for several years now, and it's gaining in popularity. Last year, we don't have hard numbers, but last year, we think the attendance was up substantially just based on the number of people that were using the rides and the tractions and the food trucks and so on. This year, of course, we had to cancel it. We were bummed out about that, but we look forward to doing it again next year. Also last year, by request of the Building and Planning Department, the Trails Committee created a subcommittee to work on the Stanford Subdivision Committee in concert with some of the other committees and committee members. And as part of that committee, the Trails and Paths Committee Subcommittee has produced two rounds of comments based on the plans that we've looked at to date. And most of those comments are centered around the creation of new trails and the preservation of existing trails on the Stanford Wedge. It's been a long time since a new subdivision has gone in in Portola Valley. So we had to do a little bit of research to figure out, well, what do we do? Well, in the Trails and Paths element, it kind of guides you through, you know, what can be done, and some of the other elements, what can be done when a new subdivision goes in. So we're very excited about proposing some new trails up in the wedge, particularly in the upper regions of the property, as well as relocating a portion of Alpine Trail, which right now runs right along the edge of the road. And we suggested to Stanford that it would be a great idea to move that, move the portion of Alpine Trail into the Stanford property away from the road. I don't know if any of you folks go out on that trail, but, you know, over the years, we've seen a lot more traffic on Alpine Road, and so the noise has grown. And so the experience of walking that trail is not the same as it used to be. So one of the things we suggested is by moving that in, it would benefit both the residents of that new subdivision and residents of town who would use that trail. So we're in a holding pattern. The two rounds of comments have gone out, and we're just waiting to hear back. We, kind of as a regular part of, regular function of the Trails and Paths Committee is we review site development permits as they come about. We also look at certain conditional use permits. And what we're doing is basically looking to see if any proposed new development would impact an existing trail, or if we could offer thoughts or ideas of how to better preserve that trail or keep a trail open during construction, things of that nature. And so we looked at a number of applications last year. One of the ones that is almost complete is Alpine Hills. We're finishing up with them on just the final touches of the trail that runs in front of Alpine Hills. We also worked with Rosati's on doing some work there as part of the renewal of their conditional use permit. Also last year, we formed a subcommittee to basically take a look at the potential impacts to development on the road remnant portion of Alpine Trail and the Frog Pond. And while we weren't looking at any hard plans, so we really didn't have a lot to say, but, you know, users of the trail and particularly, you know, people on the Trails and Paths Committee, we have a lot of years of experience in spending time in that portion of the trail. And we reached the conclusion that development there would certainly have an impact on the trail experience. But we kind of left it at that because we didn't really know what the development was going to look like, what it would be. We just said we thought that it would have an impact, and we left it at that. And that's it. That took us to the end of the year last year. This year, we'll have a lot to talk about, but I'm happy to answer questions or talk about any of the current issues that are going on with Trails and Paths.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Are there any council questions for Gary and the Trails Committee? Okay, looks like Joe Coleman from the Trails Committee also wanted to say something. Joe, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
And there's no video, right?
No, just a lovely photo of you on a horse.
Oh, okay, that's my horse. Yeah, that's Luke. The last two years, I got to do the presentation that Gary has done, and I enjoyed it. You can see that Gary does a much, much better thorough job than I did. But my main reason for making a short comment here is that the Trails and Paths Committee hasn't had a change in the past year. I've been on for about 10 to 12 years. And our last leader, Terry Lee, was fantastic. I always enjoyed what we did with him. But now that we have, he's left, as well as two other members have left, and we voted Gary Hannigan as our leader, we have a different thrust and focus. We're much more in-depth and serious in nature, and we all like it. We want you to know that we so much want to continue to support the town and the trails for not just the townspeople, but for the entire community, everybody who's allowed to be here. We were different than we were, and we're stronger than we were. You'll never get me to leave this thing. And that's all I wanted to say.
Well, thank you for your continued service on the committee, Joe. We appreciate it hearing your reports in the past, and we look forward to hearing from you in the future.
Okay, good. Thank you, everyone.
And I'll just take a moment to thank Gary and the whole committee. I was your liaison until I became vice mayor and could no longer attend the meetings on those Tuesday mornings. But yes, the committee has been doing great work, especially around these emergent, the not, when we stopped spraying emergence. The work you did sort of surveying trails was actually really helpful in terms of just tracking the effects of that. So thank you for that. If there are no other questions for Gary right now, we will move on.
If I may, I'd like to just recognize two people on the Trails and Paths Committee for their work at the Horse Fair. Barb Eckstein and Ellie Ferrari, really, they own that event, and they do such a phenomenal job, and they spend a lot of their personal time on it. And I really respect them for what they've done, and I think that it's made a real impact on our community. So I just want to acknowledge their efforts in that. Again, we didn't get to do it this year, but, you know, we look forward to doing it again next year, and I'm sure Barb and Ellie will be leading that effort up.
Yep. No, they have been, they have really taken that event over. It's great. Thanks, Gary.
Thanks.
Look forward to hearing more.
Okay.
Okay. This brings us to item nine, which is a council response to ongoing civil unrest related to the death of George Floyd. I just want to start, I just want to quickly thank my colleagues, John Richards and Mary Ann Derwin, who sort of initiated this and brought it to our attention. And I'm going to turn it over to John first, and then Mary Ann to sort of, to lead this discussion.
Okay, just a short statement here that sort of tries to describe how we arrived at the idea of bringing this issue up in the council. So over the past couple of weeks where it's been so chaotic around the world, I've often thought, and several friends have mentioned how easy it is to feel that we're somehow separate from the rest of the world here in our gorgeous valley. I've lived a big part of my life here, and I'm certainly not immune to the feeling that we enjoy some sort of special protection from everything that happens around us. But of course, we are a part of the large world, and we all play a role, however small, in how things work out in the end. I asked that this item be placed on the agenda because we need to participate in the wide world and to help figure out in whatever direction our society and our country is going to go. So I'm hopeful that the starting place is a community discussion. I'm thinking of a broad discussion that can include anything in that whole vast tangle of problems that started in our country's, unfortunately, very racist history. The role of the police is at the top of the list right now. A couple of years ago, during the renewal of our contract for law enforcement services, I asked the sheriff's office to provide us with their policy manual so we could see better what we were really buying from their service. And it took a while, but recently I discovered that this manual is now posted on the sheriff's website, which is great. It's really quite a read. It's a little 500-page tome that someone clearly spent a lot of time and care on. But of course, in the end, it really isn't, if it isn't part of the police culture, if it doesn't just, if they don't carry it with them all the time in their minds, it's just a words on paper. So a discussion about community policing is really a big thing, and I think it's necessary. And fortunately for our town, we have a sheriff's department that I expect will be very eager to participate and willing to talk. So beyond the issue of law enforcement, I think it's a really, it's a huge discussion that we need to recognize and somehow address all the legacies of racism, including housing discrimination and the simple, but really tragic fact that our society is so much poorer for its resulting lack of diversity. So with that, I will turn it over to Mary Ann for some comments, and then we'll see where we go.
Thank you, John. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
All righty, thanks. My part in this was to open a kind of a community conversation about the racial economic divide in America by starting in our own backyard. And I am going to talk about that, but then I think we should go back and address the policing because that's much more concrete and easier to deal with. But I am going to share my thoughts about the racial divide. Those of us who are in the 90% white demographic obviously have to look at our own implicit bias, our own white privilege, our own inherent racism, and educate ourselves about the history of African Americans in America, and what it's like in 2020 to be born black and never know when you leave the house if you're going to come back, or if you're going to end up in jail or in the morgue. So to tackle the racism question in Portola Valley, I think is to have to ask the question, why are we 90% white? That is, I'm not sure, we might now be 93 or 89. We'll have to see what the census shows. In a county that's 50% or actually less, why? And why isn't that changing? Why are we holding at that? If you dig a little bit into history, you unfortunately find the ugly answer. And a good source for that is a book that I'm reading, and I recommend to everybody in town, The Color of Law by Richard Rothstein. In his book, Rothstein tells a story that you may or not be aware of. So post-World War II, curiously enough, around here, housing was hard to come by. And a lot of Stanford professors who really didn't make a whole lot of money decided to form this co-op of working class and middle class families to try to solve the problem. So they formed the Peninsula Housing Association of Palo Alto. They purchased 260 acres, a ranch adjacent to Stanford, with this hope of building 400 houses, shared rec facilities, a shopping center, a gas station, a restaurant. But the problem was, the banks wouldn't finance the construction costs and issue mortgages, and the FHA wouldn't insure a loan to a co-op that included African American members. So they kind of fought among their group about this, but by a very, very close vote, they came to the decision to try to offer a compromise where they would limit the number of African American members in their co-op. But the FHA wouldn't relent, and in the end, people resigned and the whole thing fell apart. The land was sold to a private developer whose FHA agreement specified that no property would be sold to African Americans, and thus was born Ladera. But don't get too smug because Westridge is exactly the same. When my former husband and I bought our house in 1992 here on Hermosa Road in Westridge, we received the original 1947 CCNRs. I never read them till many years later, and I was absolutely horrified to discover that this document contained a restrictive covenant prohibiting non-Caucasians from buying houses in the subdivision. So this ugly legacy and our zoning ordinance and housing policies, which have resulted in preserving this paradise we live in, have also been successful in keeping working class and now even middle-class families, and by extension, people of color out of most of our neighborhoods. So my question is this, and again, this is a question for you to ponder. We don't even need to talk about it tonight because it's a big one. Should we accept the status quo? So Portola Valley is this homogenous community of mostly wealthy white people with no room left for those from other economic and racial groups, you know? And given the murder of George Floyd, the subsequent outpouring of grief and anguish and rage, and now even hope, given the uplifting of Black voices that are challenging those of us who are white to question our assumptions and our privilege, and to educate ourselves about what it means to be Black in America, and to think about how to address systemic racism in our own communities. Given all of that, is it time to connect the dots between this gorgeous place we live, 1,700 households on nine square miles of land, and the lack of economic and racial diversity in our town, and reexamine our zoning ordinances and our housing policies to consider accepting more density so that we can welcome more people of color into our community? Thank you. I think we should go back to the policing question because I believe there are a lot of questions that people want to ask.
Okay. Where does everyone want to start? Ann, did you want to start with questions? Did you want to make any comments?
Sure. I think I have kind of combination, and thank you both, John and Mary Ann, for your eloquent framing of a very, very difficult and challenging, beyond all of our wildest dreams kind of environment we find ourselves in today. And I think that in addressing, just looking to what Mary Ann raised, I think, and John as well, is that the three areas I look at are sort of the role of the police and how we can make some potential recommendations and actually move forward hopefully on some plans for how we might work with our community and work with, obviously, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Department. And so I think that's, and I will make a comment about that. And the lack of diversity, I think, has been, as Mary Ann said, when I bought my house in 1999 in this Stonegate Division, I did look at the CCNRs. And I was appalled because it had a similar prohibition against African American ownership. And it's time I challenged the realtor and said, what in the world? How is this still here? Why is it still here? Why hasn't this community removed it from the CCNRs? And, you know, 1999, like a lot of other times, including today, was a very hot real estate market. Portola Valley was already being discovered by a much broader group of folks, myself included, coming out of the city. And it, but it never, and I never got a good answer to that. And even since we've been on, obviously, working in town government, it is still in my mind a completely unacceptable, long-term solution relative to how things should look in today's world. And so that has been part of my, I think, impetus for wanting for a long time to make sure that we provide additional opportunities for a not a significant number of people because we don't, to this date, our housing doesn't allow that, but certainly to do what we can do within all of the existing things that we have planned for, for many decades. And beyond that, to Mary Ann's point, I think that's a really huge issue, and I'm not sure I would start with that right now because we obviously have some things we're looking at in the short term. But on the, in the role of the police, there is one area that I think could be particularly beneficial for all of us. And stepping back and recognizing that the San Mateo Sheriff's Office represents six communities and unincorporated San Mateo, it occurs to me that we should potentially consider having, you know, a council representative from each of the councils of those six municipalities, and someone representing unincorporated. from each of the councils of those six municipalities and someone representing unincorporated to sit down and really talk about the things that we really want to require of, you know, to get clarity on from our police department. And I was part of it with John a few years back when we were working on the sheriff's contract, and we did have many robust discussions. And I would say that as an overall comment, I am still very pleased with the work we have gotten and the service we've gotten from our police department. But now is the time to take it to a new level and to make sure that we ask for some, I think, clear prohibitions or new standards or consider, you know, all kinds of, you know, different options. And I think, Anna, as you said it in a very well-worded email we all received today about some of her recommendations, and I don't know if you all saw it, but when I did, I looked at it and said, these are exactly the kind of things that we need to discuss with the sheriff's department, with our police, because they are who is working for our community. And it starts with things like prohibiting the police from using chokeholds or applying any pressure to the throat, uniform standards for police departments regarding use of force, civilian review, transparency, due process, body cameras and training, eliminate qualified immunity, yeah, qualified immunity for police officers, another huge issue. And then there are a few more, including military equipment and the use of that, whether it's appropriate or not. And then clearly an uptick in cultural competence and unconscious bias training for law enforcement. So that was a great starting point, and I think from my perspective, I would suggest that we, as a council, potentially move forward to make a recommendation like this, to start the ball rolling on that very most important part of what I think all communities are looking to try and accomplish today. So I will stop with that commentary and move to others of my colleagues.
Thanks, Ann. Craig, why don't you go ahead and weigh in here?
Sure. So I, I agree with everything that's been said, you know? I think it, it's definitely the case that we do have issues here in Portola Valley. They may not be the same issues as in Minneapolis or many other parts of the country. And to a large degree, as you pointed out, Mary Ann, that's, that's because of the makeup of who lives in town here and who is exposed to our police forces on a regular basis. That said, we do have a lot of people who come in and out of town as, as workers rather than necessarily residents. And a very high proportion of those are Hispanic or other people of color. I know, anecdotally, my own gardener, over the years, he's been working for me for 10 years. I've known his family for closer to 15 or 20 now, him and his two brothers. And in the 10 years he's been working for me, coming here once or twice a month, depending on how much gardening needs to be done, he's been pulled over three times. And, you know, I've been living here myself for 15, 15-plus years, and I've not been pulled over once in that time. He's never been cited for anything. One of the times was right around when we had all the home invasions and burglaries. But he's, you know, driving a pickup truck, he's got his lawn mower and leaf blower and gardening equipment in the back, and he's been pulled over three times. And that, that doesn't, you know, their officer probably had a reason for doing it and so on, but, but it just, it does point to the fact that there, even in a town like Portola Valley, I think we, we do need to set a higher standard for ourselves and our, our representatives and the sheriff's department when they're acting on our behalf. That said, you know, the, the policy manual that John was talking about, which I think is closer to 600 pages than 500, I think it's 560 something, I spent a good while reading through a handful of the sections in the last few days, the training policy, the use of force policy for all of the different various types of escalation, escalating forms of force and when they're allowed to be used, under what circumstances, how much training, and so on. And it's a very thoughtfully laid-out policy, I have to say, for a large part. There are some elements of it, like the use of what they call carotid restraint or carotid control, which is basically chokeholds that we might want to specifically directly address. But I think that for a lot of the other issues that have been raised, you know, the, the policy document really lays out a very nuanced approach that doesn't necessarily specifically forbid certain things. It says, you know, there might be certain cases where pepper spray is appropriate, and there are cases where it clearly is not. I think there are elements of the policy that could certainly be refined, but it needs to be kind of read thoroughly and carefully and understood, and the balance and the, you know, the, the, the use of carotid restraint, for example, is only allowed as a last step before the use of firearms. And so if your alternative is to shoot someone as opposed to try and restrain them by the neck, then that's not necessarily unreasonable. But the question then is, you know, are you more likely to put somebody in a chokehold than you would be to pull out your gun and shoot them? And so I think it's not merely a matter of policy, it's also an understanding of, you know, when it says, okay, well, you can't use this particular device or technique unless you've been trained on it, really understanding what the training program is and what the, you know, how the whole system works comprehensively. It's not just these little individual pieces, I think, that need addressing. And so I think, Ann, your, your notion of forming some kind of group with the other towns that contract with the sheriff's department to think through these things together because it's, 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 it's a, it's a large task. And I think it needs to be done thoughtfully and with a lot of different input, and input, obviously, not just from those council members, but from the community and, and from the sheriff's office, and, and really going through it in a very thoughtful way would be, I think, quite beneficial. The, the other thing I would say is that I think there, there are some elements that are just not in the policy manual at all. So while every deputy swears an oath that I think is identical to the one that we swear when we're, when we're joining an elected body and taking office, which is an oath to uphold the constitutions of the United States and the state of California, the policy manual nowhere really addresses constitutional issues or training on constitutional issues or, you know, what the Bill of Rights really means. And I'm sure that elements of that are part of the training on when to and when not to use tear gas or when to use a chokehold or not, that probably does come up. But I think a, a greater emphasis on, you know, the ultimate function of, of the, of the police force in its training, which is to protect the public and the assumption of innocence and various basic things like that, which I think we've seen through the last few weeks, not necessarily in this community, but around the country, are just not necessarily the first consideration or even on the list. And we've seen that even to a degree here. The, the county manager imposed a curfew in Portola Valley last week without going through any of the due process requirements that the law requires, because I don't think he's had any training probably on what you need to do in order to institute a legal curfew. And so whether the curfew is appropriate or not in narrow situations, I don't think anybody could argue that you needed a curfew in Portola Valley last week. And I think that a similar kind of process needs to go kind of through the whole governmental system that we have, including the police, but, you know, as regards law enforcement and control of crowds and what kinds of activities people are allowed to do without expecting violence against them. So I, I, I support your, your, your concept, Ann, of, of creating a, I don't know what we'd call it, a commission or something of, of the cities to, to think about it and really digest it. At the same time, you know, I think from the, from the inclusiveness and housing perspective, I think we have been doing some of that work. I think this council, for the last few years, we've been really working to try to advance that. The, the primary driver of that has not necessarily been racial equality or equity, but it certainly has been a component, and I think we've, we've brought attention to that as we've been going through the processes that we've been, we've been doing. So I think a broader community discussion of other, other things we could do to help and to raise, increase awareness and to be more thoughtful generally would be a good idea to continue as well. And the other thing that I would suggest is that we might just have some kind of a public process within Portola Valley where we just get our community members, you know, both residents, people who work here, people who want to offer us their thoughts from where, you know, wherever they may come from, to take part in some kind of an open meeting where we just, you know, discuss some of these ideas and see if anybody else in the community has thoughts.
John, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Craig. I agree with most of what you said. It is an incredibly complex situation, getting back to the police issues. And not only does it involve complex training issues that we don't have any idea of how they, how they work really and how intense they are, how successful, but there also has recently been pointed out that the scope of the mission of the police has grown dramatically over the years to include more and more really seemingly unrelated, things that are unrelated to law enforcement, even so far as thinking, well, gee, maybe even traffic enforcement should be handled by people without weapons. That, that might make a big change. So I think rethinking the actual mission of the police, I would think some of them would be delighted to get some of these things off their plate, like the, the mental health issues that have fallen apart ever since one of our long-ago governors tore apart the system in California. I, I, I think you're absolutely right that it's a conversation that ought to take place with the rest of the contract cities in, in San Mateo County. I think Jeremy has already spoken with some of these town managers, I think Mary Ann has as well. And so hopefully, we can make a conversation going. But I also agree that having a, be a public process in town where we can get, people can input their questions, thoughts and questions and ideas for, for potential change, just to start off. It's, it's probably going to be kind of messy, but I, I think that's what it starts to, it's going to take to start it up. And I, I think it has every right to, to happen, however it's going to happen, and we just need to stay on top of it, so.
Mary Ann, go ahead.
I have questions, but I don't think anybody is going to be able to answer them, so maybe they should be written down. And whenever this group is formed, assuming it is formed, and you meet with the sheriff, you could ask. So in terms of data, does the sheriff keep data regarding arrests as to how many white people, how many Latino, how many African-American, how many Asian? I'm curious, does that exist? And to Craig's example of racial profiling, when the sheriff deputy pulls somebody over and doesn't cite them, is that recorded? And if it is, would there be a name? And again, could we track the race of the people they're pulling over to tell whether it's mostly people of color? And then who polices the police here? Who, who has oversight of the sheriff? Can anybody tell me that?
So for, for certain incidents, it's laid out in the policy manual. So there is a section on, for example, officer-involved shootings, about who conducts the investigations and what the procedures are. They're in many ways quite different from if you or I shot somebody. And so I think it could be useful to ask the sheriff why there are some of those differences in terms of, you know, the, the officers are automatically put on administrative leave, for example, but they're not arrested, they're not questioned at the time of the incident. They're, they're granted certain things that, you know, if you or I shot somebody, we wouldn't be granted. And so having a better understanding of some of those processes, I think, would be important. There are also other disciplinary procedures that are outlined in the policy manual. I haven't had a, had time to read through all of those thoroughly yet, but I was really focused on the kind of use of force stuff.
But are they?
It is laid out in the policy manual, and so would be a reasonable subject to, to go through if we formed this committee.
But, you know, we are accountable to the voters. The board of supervisor are accountable to voters, the sheriff's accountable to the voters, but is the sheriff's office accountable to anyone? Or are they autonomous, or they're like the Vatican?
Many towns have, cities have a police commission that is often made up of, of residents and, and elected officials to oversee the sheriffs. I don't know if there's anything comparable in, in San Mateo County.
Well, whoever is on this group, could you ask that question?
Yeah. I was going to say a couple of things. You know, the first one is that, you know, I, I agree with, with all of you, which there's, in my mind, just based on, you know, decades now of just evidence, experiences and, and the research I've done over the years, there's no question in my mind, there is, you know, institutional racism. It is pervasive, it is corrosive, and we, I think we really have a, I think it's a moral imperative that we addressed it in some way. You know, and we're, we're an affluent community, mostly white, but I think that actually puts us in a, in a position where I feel a certain responsibility to take some of this on. Like most of you, I think we've all received a lot of these emails from, for example, the Eight Can Wade movement. I wouldn't take, I wouldn't put all of my trust in any one of those organizations or all of those, those lists. The important thing I took away from that was that there are a large number of measures that have sort of, have some evidence backing them, that they actually make a difference and they help. It's a place to start, and I, I agree that I think banning our, you know, banding together with the other contract towns and the unincorporated county is a great way to basically create a group that could maybe have one voice and start addressing some of these thoughtfully with the sheriff's office. And I don't, you know, I don't know the answers to some of those questions about oversight. I mean, some police forces have citizens' oversight committees, some don't. Police unions often fight that, I know that. But again, I, I agree, these are all questions we should be cataloging and probably building up something, you know, probably building up for a discussion, you know, among, among, you know, managers and elected officials of towns, but also, I agree with John, that the community should be participating in this as well. Craig, go ahead.
I have a question actually for Kara about union contracts with the sheriff's department, and if, say, the six towns or even Portola Valley by itself decided that we wanted to create some kind of regulation for the application or the, you know, exercise of police power within Portola Valley, and we establish that in our municipal code, could the sheriff establish a contract in violation of that public policy between the sheriff's office and the union, or would that be unenforceable?
So, so what you're asking is if we have a policy that says ban chokeholds, and we want to enforce that through our contract with the sheriff's department and the union refuses, I mean, it would have to be, it would have to be a meet and confer issue under, you know, just standard labor negotiations. And then if, under, under the meet and confer process, if, if the parties can't meet, then, then the agency, in this case, it would be the sheriff's department as the employing agency, could impose that, that contract requirement if, if there is a sufficient, you know, management need to do so. So it is, it is a complicated labor issue that we would have to kind of sort out.
So in a labor contract, you can, you can enter into a contract that's in violation of public policy and the law? That's an exception?
Oh. So if we have a policy and no chokeholds, and then the sheriff's contract...
If it says a chokehold means you'll only be subject to administrative discipline, for example, and we say it's a crime?
That is, that's complicated. I'm, I'm, I'd have to kind of, yeah, work that, work that through.
One of the, one of the things I've been, I've been trying to think through is, you know, I think unions provide a considerable benefit to police officers as well as many other forms of employees. I wouldn't want to constrain those unions where what they're doing makes sense and conforms with public policy and improves society. But where, where the union is contracting to do things that go against the public good, those, I, I've been trying to look at it from that angle and see if there's anything we could do from that angle as we're trying to work through this to essentially rein in the union's ability to, to do bad things, but still let them do good things.
That, that, it's a, it's a fascinating issue, actually, from a, from a legal perspective. So I'm, I'm sure other cities will, will be looking at that issue as well. And certainly, police personnel in general have immunity for, for certain actions, but I think your proposal is... is
But they only have
It's a kind of a workaround.
As I understand it, that's the other thing is qualified immunity only is only if they think that they're behaving according to law. But if something is illegally, then they can't do it. They don't get qualified immunity.
Right, right, right. Yes.
Anne has her hand up. Go ahead, Anne.
Yeah, I have. I think that the issue here is probably less of a legal one, at least initially. It's going to be much more of a tactical and using and leveraging the strength of the group united. Because if you look at it as a percentage of their business and their operations in the sheriff's department, when you aggregate all those groups, you're going to have a lot of influence. So my hope is, is that they're obviously going to approach this from a positive perspective of what changes, regardless of where those contracts are, because we can deal with that probably as it would evolve. But the key issues there will be to address them and reach a consensus on how everybody thinks that we should proceed. And the other thing I was going to say is that it occurred to me relative to the local group, you know, our own John's point about convening our residents to get their input. We I recall that we have a police commissioner. And it was a position that we had many years ago, Gary Nielsen, I think, is still in it. And it's it hasn't ever been effectively used. I would say that, at least that's my impression, having done this.
It's at the speed trailer. It's very important responsibility.
So but that said, this is an interesting issue that, you know, you raised as you was talked about it, John, I thought, hmm, what have we done with that position? And where would it fit into this if anywhere? But we had it, and we had it for many years. And that person functioned as more than just a liaison to the sheriff's department. But I don't think they've been terribly active, as you said, Craig, in the last few years. But it certainly could be part of our outreach. And maybe we recast that in some new fashion to make it very meaningful in terms of what we're looking at now.
So I think there's a consensus here that we all want to take some step, particularly the policing part of this. I think there's historic, I think we've all sort of been in agreement that we want to take some some efforts, and we have taken efforts on the housing part of it. Although we might want to think about what else to what how else to organize around that. And that's another point of this. You know, the questions, sticking to the police part, I think the questions are kind of process, and sort of who we work with. And I want to come back to that. I think, right now, maybe we've I see some hands up. So I think we'll take some public comments, and then we can come back for another discussion about what steps we might be ready or willing to take on any or all of these problems. So with that, I will call Kristi Corleto. Do you want to say something on this? Kristi, you may need to unmute at your end. Sorry, Kristi, you're still you're still muted.
Sorry. That was for correction of minutes. I've just had it up since then.
Okay, well, why don't we we'll we'll get back to you offline about how to about that correction. Okay. Okay, next up, Annalise. Do you want to Annalise Constance, please?
Yeah, hi. Thank you. First off, I'd just like to say that I really appreciate what everyone has said thus far, for the most part. I agree that it's it's such a huge issue beyond just police reform, beyond just housing. There's also education. And as someone who grew up in both Ormondale and Cordermadera schools, I can't say that I ever remember talking about race or inclusion. And meanwhile, we have students being bused in from East Palo Alto, and those students unfortunately were my peers who are racially profiled while walking to Roberts after school or to the deli. And I think that what Craig said about not only just people who are living in this community, but people who visit this community should feel safe as well. And I think it's not just, you know, a possible thing that we should touch upon. I think it's absolutely our duty as an extremely privileged white community in the Bay Area with so many resources to really do a lot about this. That's also to say that I don't have too many answers. I'm definitely someone who's coming from the idea of abolishing the police force. And again, I don't have too many answers. There's a lot of systemic racism that also occurs within social services. And like I mentioned, education. And, yeah, but I guess what I'm trying to say is that I really appreciate that this conversation is happening right now as someone who grew up biracial in Portola Valley. And, you know, I'm not someone that had to research what racism is like in Portola Valley. It's something that I've truly experienced. That is all that I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. David Cardinal, you're up next.
Sure, thanks. First, I think it's great. We're having this conversation. And I think we're unbelievably fortunate to be able to have it in our little paradise with our great relationship with our sheriffs. And up way supportive of what we can do in the housing front, whether it's Stanford or the town. On the policing thing, I think we have to come up with what we want from them a little bit, because we had, I don't want to say a rash of burglaries, but the town got very sensitive to burglaries, for example. And we put in license plate readers, and we got excited. And, you know, we wanted everybody to find the people who did it. Well, a lot of the people who did it were described as the kind of people that might get stopped. And they weren't described as, you know, Craig Hughes driving a Lexus or whatever, or me driving a Subaru. So I think I'm all for it. I just want to be careful. We make sure we understand what we're asking for before we try and get the sheriff to make the numbers match or not pick more people of a certain kind to pull over or whatever. That's my only point.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. Thanks, David. There's a lot of there's a lot of complicated questions we have to start and start asking and answering for on this. So thank you. Betsy, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Alson and council members for bringing us fully into this conversation for your invitation to join. I was quite heartened as you began with the proclamations acknowledging Gate Path and Pride Month, because it was such an auspicious start to tonight, and and countered the tremendous heaviness that these last weeks have brought. The anger that I have had and have, and that has grown in us and in our communities, has met with such glaringly insufficient responses from our police departments nationwide. And I'll get to local in a moment. But there are changes, and I just want to speak to the to the couple of categories of changes that that could be, and I think really must be enacted now. And the first you've touched on, which is use of force laws. As I've seen and watched the news and read the news, the images of police using as a means of crowd control, shooting rubber bullets into the faces of peaceful protesters, and locally naming a peaceful protester in San Jose, aiming for his groin and causing permanent injury. It was stunning. And worse yet is to draw the attention in our backyard to three separate incidents in 2018, three taser deaths of San Mateo County men with developmental disabilities, which takes us back to Gate Path. And this is a huge issue nationwide, the developmental disabilities and death, death by taser or by gun, because we don't have the skills to address them properly. And one such man died at the hands of our own San Mateo County Sheriff's Department within hours of his infraction. His name is Chinadu Kobe. And he died within hours of jaywalking Al Camino in Millbrae. And so this is the same resource that we use in our own town. And although I have come to know by attending a couple of meetings, our local sheriff, and unlike Craig, I have been pulled over, I have found them all to be enormously respectful. But I fall into a different category. And as I read in preparation for tonight's meeting, so I have to thank you again, because it incented me to dig deeper into the end of Chinadu Kobe's death and in the accountability around that death. So A, I invite you all to go where I have gone, because it was shocking. And rather than belabor that here, I want to just turn to the other big point, which is oversight and accountability. Because our need to at least be at a level of San Francisco is far ahead of us in this area, but to start to look towards and implement fully independent prosecutors, this is an enormously important, fully independent prosecutors, because that's why so many of these people, that and police unions, so many bad cops, act again and again and again. And we also need critical incident review boards that would include members such as yourselves and community members, as well as members of the of the police department that can deal with trigger happy policing. And it might begin to restore this faith that we're so sorely in need of right now. So I just think that the goal is ostensibly to protect the public, but I feel radically less safe than I would like to. And I'd very much like to see as much local community pressure as we can apply to drive what's also happening at the state and God knows what we hope will happen at the national level. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Betsy. Yeah, the other point that comes out of that is I think that level of trust improves the safety of the law enforcement officers as well. That's something that I keep coming back to when I talk to people about this. So thank you for making that point. Mary Cooper, you're up.
Thank you. I'm from La Deera. So thank you, Marianne, I think, for pointing out the history of La Deera. And thank you for having this conversation. It's interesting, I didn't pay much attention to the county sheriff, because never had a problem with them until what's been happening. And so I came across a report last week, it's going to be it's now going to be national. It's put out by Reflective Democracy. They did a national study on who are our sheriffs. And it turns out, they're about ninety percent plus are white men. So I think this same group did a study of prosecutors five years ago, and found similar demographics. So as a result of that, more women of color have run to be prosecutors, because people don't pay attention to who is a prosecutor, what they do, etc. So I went on the website for the sheriff. And so thank you, John, for mentioning that handbook. I did not see that. What I was looking for, the racial breakdown of who's in the sheriff's department, it's a very large department. And is there a complaint, a citizen complaint, can you find data? I had trouble finding data on the website. So I think it's worth engaging in a conversation with the sheriff, because it sounds like we have a lot of questions. The other point I would make is, and I appreciated, Jeff, you had a call with Don Horsley a couple of weeks ago, and I listened to that. He's a former sheriff. I was underwhelmed by his response. In terms of what's going on, I guess I expected more urgency around what's happening and what San Mateo County is going to be their response. He said something like, well, we now look at things through an equity lens. So if we're going to do something in Atherton around a benefit, we'll try to do the same thing in East Palo Alto. And that was basically the response. And so I was just frankly disappointed. So it sounds like there's more things that our county can be doing in terms of as they look at their next budget, for example. How will that be influenced by the inequities that people are feeling there needs to be such an urgent response to? So I think that's worth our asking that question. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. No, it's a good it's a great point. And yes, the county process is ongoing, and I believe we will. We will have some input into it. But it's happening right now. So thank you. Judith Murphy, Judy, go ahead.
Thank you. Like everybody, I really appreciate you taking this up. It would be very easy for a small town to sort of say, not our problem. And I respect greatly that you've undertaken the whole thing and are willing to sit and listen to all of us. Many of us have been nowhere other than with this issue for about 10 days now. It's just been overwhelming. And we spent many hours all day, every day in it. A couple of things I want to say, one is, the restrictive covenants that are in people's deeds were actually in virtually every California homeowner that bought a house, even if you weren't in any kind of a planned development, unless you lived in one of these redlined areas, you could look in your deed. When Bob and I bought our first house in Palo Alto in the early 80s, that it was there was a covenant in our deed that said that we couldn't sell to a non Caucasian. And it was no longer operative, because it was by then, it was in violation of state law. But if you look back far enough in the in the history, virtually every every deed had it. Bob worked in California for the legislature, the year that California Fair Housing Law was passed, he was on the Judiciary Committee, and it barely passed and only with some sort of shenanigans by Willie Brown that it that it made it through. But it was just the way it was just the way things were, and everybody accepted it. So I want to talk about the policing a little bit, because I think this is extraordinarily important. One is, I wasn't able to come up with any good information about what's the diversity in the sheriff's office. What what just at the simplest level, what have they done about diversity within their own ranks? And it's not like that's a panacea, because obviously policemen of color, you see the pictures there, they are doing these things also. But it's but it's one place to start. And I think the other is these the harm reduction items, the pieces, the eight can't wait that are specifically under harm reduction are, it's like almost hard to believe that we have to ask that they're there. It's like, really? They don't do this? Really? So I think those things are essential. It's one thing to have policy, we're looking at their policy, they have 600 pages of policy, much of which is good, some of which is questionable. But there's a there's a big gap between what's policy and what's actually happening. What's actually happening? What are people actually doing? And I think that there are two things there. One of them is the training, what kind of training are they actually getting? I don't know if it's true or not. But one of the things I've seen repeatedly online, as I've tried to educate myself about this, is that the police have fewer required hours in training than the cosmetologists do in many places. I don't know if that's true in California or not. But if it is, it's shocking. But the even bigger one is accountability, that you can that my understanding of the thing is that the nexus of the problem is in the accountability area, and that in the collective bargaining process, as the unions develop their contracts, that they have they get in these contracts, these clauses about what's what, you know, that what a reasonable person would be held to, they're not held to because they're in special circumstances. And that I understand, because they are in special circumstances. But the idea that if a policeman repeatedly does things that are considered wrong, he's investigated, he's found guilty, he's sometimes discharged, he the the union sues, he gets his job back, he gets his back pay. It's not public record that the that to me, in the accountability area is where it's all about. And that I hope that when the towns are talking together with the sheriff's office, this will be in big red letters at the at the top of the thing. The idea is that there's no public record. I mean, as a position, if somebody sues me, you can find that out before you choose to come to me. But we can't find out if our sheriffs, you know, strangled somebody when they worked in Southern California before they worked here. It's not public record. And I think that's It's not public record. And I think that's such a significant piece of it. And that, that the departments can't find that out when they're hiring people. It's like crazy, makes no sense. And I know that I saw that San Francisco just added that to what they are going to expect. But once again, you see that happening and you think, really? They aren't already doing this? How can that possibly be? So I feel very strongly about that. And in terms of what the community might do, I recently started with my friends, just a reading group based on, you know, how, how to try to become more of an anti racist, I guess is the current term. And I think it might be useful for the town to do something like that. Most of us, even those of us with good intentions and good hearts have been raised in a way that we have views that we're not aware of and say things that are very offensive to people, even, even us. Folks were trying desperately not to be that way. So I think education of ourselves is critically important. And I'd like to see the town formally sponsor something like that, sort of ongoing discussion groups. Looking at our own, you know, we're so, we're so privileged, we sit here without having to worry about what a policeman is going to do to me on my way home tonight. And we have a great responsibility, I think, to educate ourselves more about how the real world is going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. We actually, I think, I, I saw a comment from one of my colleagues about establishing a book group of some sort. So I think that might very well be in our future here. So really, that's another great suggestion. That's all the public comments we have. So bringing it back to the council. I mean, I, I'm trying to think of where to start. I mean, I think there's several, you know, we've got several like, I mean, we clearly want to take some sort of action. I think it probably involves some form of collaboration with, with the other towns. So it's probably something where it's, it's probably, you know, a group we put together. Where do you guys want to start in terms of, we'll start with the sort of the police part of it first. You know, is where do you guys want to start with that in terms of what's a step we could take? What's any suggestions? John's got his hand up.
Yeah, I would like to see it, see us put together some sort of portal that the public can use to give suggestions to us that we can access and aggregate in one spot. And then maybe use those as we, as we put together this group of, of contract cities. Which maybe Jeremy has something, some comments on that score. Is whether or not we can form a group with one or two of us in this council and then members of other city councils and, and the police department, of course. Try to figure out where to take it from here. So I think it's probably a brainstorming session at first.
Yeah, I was, I had the idea that maybe it'd be like one council, one of us, Jeremy, and then the, maybe the manager or staff member in one council from each other's cities, but it could be two of us. I don't know what people think about that. But Craig, go ahead.
One thing that I think is important is that, you know, and this, this is touching on something that Judith just, just said. You know, about not knowing what's, what's, what's the status in California and within San Mateo County as opposed to things that we're seeing on the news from other parts of the country. The, the state legislature, just in the last few years, has done a number of things to try and create more police accountability. And things like your record in previous jurisdictions before you come to a new one is now public record. And it's being fought to some degree by the unions, but the courts seem to be siding more with the legislature within the unions audit. So we'll, we'll see where it ends up. But there are things like that. I think there's something called RIPA, which is mandated reporting to the state of all traffic stops. Actually, I think traffic and pedestrian stops, including racial data and things like that. That's all reported to the state. I took a look at the, at the state website where that database is compiled and they only, it seems to only be queryable by the larger jurisdictions. The rest of the data is kind of all aggregated together. And San Mateo County is not large enough to hit the list with Los Angeles and San Francisco and San Bernardino and some other gigantic agencies. But the data, the data is there. And so I'm sure if we wanted to get it from the sheriff's department, they'd be able to provide it for us. The, the difficulty that we've had in the past, and this may be an issue to bring to the six city commission, if one is such a thing as formed, is that historically the sheriff has often not been able to break out Portola Valley data from their whole data set. So they collect data for the six cities plus unincorporated county. And they can report on that, but they just, they don't have the ability to track and report on was this in Portola Valley or was it not in Portola, or was it somewhere else? And so to the extent that we would like data for our community specifically, I think that should be a part of the discussion with the, with the sheriff's office around. You know, what would be involved in reconfiguring their systems or adding a zip code field or at least a town name or something to the form that the officer fills out when he's actually affecting the stop so that that data can be analyzed and, and we can know what's going on in Portola Valley as opposed to countywide. If that's something that we need to, we feel we want to know. So I think, you know, getting, collecting that information about what is the current state of things for us specifically, for this county and for a town in Portola Valley, as opposed to all the stuff we're hearing on the news. Because I think a lot of the, a lot of the recommendations that we're hearing that, as Judith says, it's sort of shocking to hear that it's not what people are doing. I, I think in California and in San Mateo County, a lot of those things are already in place, or at least some attempt has been made to put them in place. So we might want to review them to see how effective they've been and whether, you know, they're put in place in the right way, whether they need a little bit of tweaking. But I think just having a, a better base level of an understanding of what is the current status so that we, we're not throwing in recommendations for things that actually are already there.
I mean, I think the, the, the big ask around that specific point is just transparency and accountability for our local sheriff. And so the question might, the question might just be what, you know, of the things that we've seen suggested to improve accountability and transparency, what are you doing? What aren't you doing? And how is it working?
Exactly. Yeah. And just, I mean, an education session where they can let us know, you know, this is what we are doing. Because I think it's, it's just, it's, it's hard to find on their website and it's hard to, even when you do find it, you know, read through the 564 pages to really understand it. And so having a better understanding, I think, is a, a good starting point.
Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, that's actually, it's a similar line of thinking, I think I always had about this, which is to start by going to the sheriff's department and really getting a recap of where they are and what they're potentially suggesting going forward. Because I can't imagine that they aren't having internal discussions right now. You know, recognizing that all of us are going to be looking very carefully and a lot more specifically at the actions that they're taking and policies, et cetera. And so I would probably start by potentially having a letter from the town coming to the sheriff's department to say, you know, we think it's important to get some of the data you're talking about, Craig. And, and to really improve transparency and accountability. And then to float out the idea that we are, you know, suggesting that there may be an opportunity for the groups that are served by the San Mateo Sheriff's Department to work together in addressing these issues. And I, I think I personally favor at least having two of us in each of those discussions, just because I think it's a big issue. And it's going to take some time. And I know that when we've worked in pairs for some of the harder things that we've worked on with contracts, I think that's always had a better outcome relative to that. And we wouldn't have to decide that now, I don't think, just because I think, again, there's a lot to play out, but I would probably start with a letter from the town requesting that information, you know, letting them know that this is one of the ideas that we're considering and we're actively wanting to pursue with them and seeing, seeing where they come back at us on that one. And then we can potentially move it from there.
Yeah, no, I like that idea. I'm, I'm wondering if maybe it should be, you know, if we should work with the other, try to, try to work with the other jurisdictions, sort of like have a letter come from like six of us and someone, maybe the six representative towns. Either way, I think it's a good step. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to spend too much time trying to get that, but.
And just to answer that, Jeff, I think it would be a matter of whether the, because the councils are going to want to weigh in on this, I would think, in all of those jurisdictions. And so we can certainly, you know, CC all those jurisdictions in our letter, you know, and they can decide whether they think it's a reasonable idea or not. And I know Jeremy's having some other discussions with his counterparts and that's a great place. But obviously it's going to be at the council level, I think, where that direction will come in each of these cases. So, so I think that's probably a good way to do it, you know, sort of working it through the, you know, the town and, and city managers. But at the same time, that we take the step here that this council has endorsed, you know, this, this approach. And the first step is to really ask San Mateo to give us some of the data that we've all been talking about, you know, and to see what they're planning to do, if they have plans.
Yep, yep. Mary Ann, go ahead.
So we're assuming that the other four jurisdictions are going to agree to that, that this is a good idea, right? We don't yet know if they will agree.
Yeah, we don't need all of them.
Right. I just don't want to have this fall off the list because everybody doesn't want to do it and it just gets pushed away. And I think it should happen fairly soon.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Just based on listening to that conversation, the council, it sounds like that what we're discussing is multiple concurrent tracks. So I think all of these efforts can go on. I mean, obviously there's a little work that needs to happen upfront. As I think John mentioned, I had reached out to city managers just to have a, a conversation because the five contract cities had not gotten together in any capacity previous to these events. So we thought it was just a good idea generally, and then we could go into a, a more precise conversation. So to Mary Ann's comments, I don't think there's any reason to slow anything down because I think that there's multiple prongs to this, to this approach.
As far as the logistics of, of this thing, would it make sense to Mary Ann's point? I, I agree. I don't think we should really delay it. And, you know, if it takes other towns a while to, to, to join us in this discussion, we should move along anyway. Would it make sense for us to invite the other towns to join us? And, you know, if they accept the invitation and show up this month or next month or the month after, they're welcome to join. But we'll start the conversation. We pick a date and say, this is going to be the first meeting and come if you want.
I love that.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
I was going to say that it, I think that is a much more direct and powerful way to communicate than a city manager conversation. So with something that certainly could either be drafted to come back to the full council or the the mayor could be given some authority to work with staff to prepare that letter, either way. But that makes a lot of sense.
I'd be happy to defer if someone on the council wanted to be the signatory on that letter. I would, I would be okay. So I know we all kind of feel strongly about this. But either way, we have one public comment. Rita, why don't you go ahead and, and comment and then we'll, we'll continue.
Yeah, I just have a question before we start. As a town going to talk to other people about diversity, is there any diversity training for our council people or our committee people? Will there be some pre-training or pre-discussions before then whoever's appointed to speak to the sheriff's department actually has some information of what the other members of the town feel that it's important for them to discuss? Thank you.
It's a fair question. I honestly, I'm, I'm thinking about that and I, I think it's a fine idea. I hadn't thought about how we would go about that. That's an interesting question. So I, I'd say probably there should be. So I think we should probably consider that going, going along with these other conversations. Jeremy?
I can certainly reach out to organizations that support trainings of the like and provide that information to the council members.
Yeah.
I would add, I, I don't know if that should necessarily gate the beginning of the conversation. I, I think it's an important idea and I think it would be very helpful. But I think at least the kind of preliminary, you know, getting the ball rolling doesn't necessarily need to wait on scheduling that if, if we can get some, you know, get the ball rolling before that. And it would be very, very useful, I think, certainly for me, if, or anybody, anybody else who'd be on that. Basically have that. And also the, the community meeting that we were talking about to, to get input from our residents.
Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that it, it will be important to make sure we have the sequence right. And I'm, you know, I think that the community meeting is probably number one because we're going to want to, you know, solicit our, all the best thinking from the community at this point. And concurrent, we may be able to concurrently ask San Mateo County Police. I mean, I think that's a key first step too, is that giving them the opportunity to tell us what they're doing, anything, what data we require, this kind of thing. And then after we've had those two is when I would suggest we would then move forward to have, try and convene this group. And if people don't want to join, they don't want to join. You know, we're happy to go it alone, as you suggest, Craig. I have no problem. But I just want to make sure we have all the questions answered. And, and to the last participant's question is, I think it's a great idea for us to, any of us to look at those issues too, you know, the diversity training issues that we would benefit from. So I think, I think that's all important as the very first steps. But I think we can move it pretty quickly. I don't see any, the good news about the COVID environment is that we're getting a lot where we start to be able to do more things more quickly than we were in sort of the pre, pre-COVID environment.
I think we as a council have to put our money where our mouth is and commit to some kind of training. As long, and I think it could be concurrent, so it just doesn't, doesn't slow us up on anything else. But I, we have to, we have to walk the walk. So yes, we will, I, I think we should be willing to commit to something as a group, maybe even as a public meeting. I don't know. But so figure out some way to go forward with that, along with everything else we're talking about right now. So yes, that's a point well taken. So we've sort of focused on the policing thing and we've got a few steps we're thinking about. I guess, do we, like, have we, have we, Jeremy, do you think we've identified enough sort of guidance to get started on? Sort of, we've identified a few projects here. I just want to know if we're, we're sort of clear enough for, for to move forward right now, or should we? Are there more details you'd like to see us resolve? Or John, do you want to comment first?
I just, just a thought, we might even ask the sheriff's department to share their, their training with us.
Yes, yeah, definitely.
So I think it would be helpful at this juncture to appoint either one or two council members. I think that that can help with, but I think we understand the general guidance. There's, there's some specific questions I think that that group can, can work on, timing and the like. So I would certainly recommend that action. I would also point out or suggest that if there's a, if there's a desire on the council's level to make any statement about the murder of Mr. Floyd, the, the conversation that had initially occurred between John, Mary Ann and myself was around a resolution and they wisely suggested that it should be a much broader conversation with the council, but certainly don't want to lose sight of why we're having this conversation tonight. So I wanted to put that back out there and see if there's something that you'd like either that subcommittee to draft, the staff to draft and bring back to the next council meeting. Thanks.
I definitely like the idea of, of creating a subcommittee that could be involved in those conversations. You know, the, the letter we're talking about drafting with the sheriff, I, I'm not ready to write tomorrow. So, so maybe the subcommittee could work with, with staff and a few others, just to make sure that we're, I mean, I just want to make sure we ask all the questions we want to ask in that letter and to make sure that we're knowing the right questions to ask. You know, the other step, I like the resolution idea. I'll be curious to hear other people's opinions. The other thing I was thinking of, I like that book club idea, which had kind of already been floated by, by Mary Ann specifically. Even if it's nothing more than just a reading list that we put out publicly and sort of commit to reading some of ourselves. Just an idea there to start with. So where do we want to start? We've got, we could, we could talk about the subcommittee, we could talk about, do you want to start with that? Subcommittee. Does anybody want to volunteer for that subcommittee?
I would like to.
I'd be okay with volunteering, but I don't, I don't want to take it. If I, I know that John and Mary Ann have put a lot of work into this already. I don't know if they strongly would be excited about being on the subcommittee or, or not.
Yeah, I think that makes, I think that makes more, makes sense, Craig. I think, I think John and Mary Ann started the ball rolling.
If they're both interested, I'd, I'd be fine with that too. Are you? What say you?
What say?
I'm okay with it.
Mary Ann, are you?
Yes, I.
I figured, I figured you would be. So, okay. Do you want, should we start with that? Should we, can I, I could take a nomination for a subcommittee on this?
I move that we approve, that we nominate John and Mary Ann to be on our subcommittee.
Second those nominations.
Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you.
With the mayor, is this subcommittee on sort of police reform issues and racial equity issues related to housing? Or is the subcommittee mainly focusing on police issues?
I was thinking of it as police issues. Do I have that right? Are we?
Yeah.
We'll move on to the housing thing in a minute, but I was thinking it was sort of police equity and policing.
I think that's right. I think we might perhaps, you know, as as we run through these other ideas, assign some of those also. So if we were to have a community meeting or something like that, you know, we might probably, it would be related to that because we probably want to invite the sheriff to come to that meeting. So there may be other issues we assign to that committee as to that subcommittee as well. But primarily, I think it's on policing matters.
Yep.
Is there a broad category that we could, you know, it would have a bit of an umbrella? I mean, I was thinking whether it's equity or you know, that's a pretty broad moniker or description of it.
Jeremy, go ahead.
Just a suggestion that some of the broader work may come out of community meetings as well. So it may be a bit premature to appoint something in a broader sense until the councils had an opportunity to hear from the from residents on what's important to them as part of this. And that could include housing at this point, or it could be different.
Go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, I think maybe it makes sense, I think, to Jeremy's point to just leave it as we have it right now with it focused on policing. And then as we have a bigger discussion with the community, we'll see what other directions we may want to take it.
That does feel like the priority right this moment. The housing question is something we've been, I mean, we have been wrestling with it. We will be wrestling with it for the foreseeable future. I agree, some more input might might be might give us some new directions to move on that. But so Craig, go ahead.
I would propose the first other item for the committee to discuss and maybe produce something to bring back to the council would be a statement on the death of George Floyd and the related events. My my recommendation would be that it be broader than just the death of George Floyd, but the death of George Floyd as part of a pattern and then, you know, all of the issues that are connected to it and a statement broadly addressing those issues, which I think they would be quite capable of expounding on.
Yes, perhaps Craig would like to do the first draft.
I can't because the subcommittee is two other people.
That's fine.
I was, I was thinking that I don't want to, I don't want to drop everything on John and Mary Ann right this minute. But but if you're comfortable taking that on as part of sort of this, Jeremy.
Staff is happy to support as well.
With staff's help.
I did know that, and thank you. And I just, okay. Fair enough.
Yeah, we actually started at this point a little while ago. And so we kind of we have a start at this point, anyway. We'll take it. I think we'll be able to.
I'm perfectly comfortable with you doing it. I just don't want to, I just don't want to put too much work on you and around it.
Appreciate it.
My only, only, only concern. Are there others? Okay, so we've got the subcommittee. They will begin. We talked about the resolution or a statement about about policing and George Floyd. We talked about a letter to the sheriff's office, which we would maybe CC other other jurisdictions on. Is that something, is that a subcommittee task? Or is that something for maybe me and Jeremy? Or what do you guys think? Anyone? Jeremy, go ahead.
I just, if this is helpful, I'm sorry, Ann, you raise your hand. Why don't you go first and then I can follow.
I was just going to say, I think it's all part of that same initial response. So assuming that John and Mary Ann are, again, it doesn't all have to go out at once. Again, because I think that, again, it's sort of, there's, there is a bit of a sequence here relative to the first efforts. And contacting the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, I think, is important just to ask those first set of questions, not so much tell them what we want to do, but really, really, so.
You know, I just want to comment that you can support the sheriff and you can still ask really hard questions.
That's right.
I would argue supporting the sheriff requires you to ask hard questions. Yes. Go ahead, Greg.
Just to the request for information from the sheriff, I think that I probably have a list of things that would be very helpful for me to understand. And so if I could send to staff a list of here's some stuff I'd like to know that could be merged into that. So not necessarily, you know, an interactive part of the discussion of how to write the letter or any of that stuff, but just, you know, here are the things I'd like to know. It would be very helpful to me if I could send that through staff.
And I think Ann and I could do the same through staff.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay. The other item we sort of touched on that I liked was the the book club or reading list. Mary Ann, do you want to take the lead on that? Or do you want?
I just thought it would be a nice thing if we had a book that the community could read and maybe we could have a little book club corner on our agenda. And, you know, take 15 minutes or something in a meeting to talk about it. Or maybe it would feed into a discussion, a community discussion. I don't know. It's just a nice starting point.
Oh, I like it. I think it's a great idea. I was just, my question was, do you have, I mean, you sound like, I know you've got a reading list. I think Craig probably has plenty of reading.
There's a lot of reading. Yeah, there's a lot of books.
I just, my question is, does somebody want to kind of take ownership of that and just sort of curate a few things?
You know, and I wouldn't mind working with Anne Marie Despain.
There are probably some people at the library that.
Yeah, they are. They actually. Yes, I would really like to work with them to come up with a good book. Because I mean, there are books I like, but they probably have a much larger.
Yeah. Jeremy, do you have a comment?
Yeah, the, as you know, I'm the chair of the operations committee for the library. Just got renominated for another two-year term.
Yay.
Yeah, thank you. The library is putting together or has put together a list of books relevant to what's happening right now. And I will send that out to all the council members. One suggestion is that we have a cultural arts committee that is well well able to put together some kind of experience related to this, particularly around books. There may be speakers, too. So would recommend that the council ask the concert, excuse me, the conservation committee, sorry, Judy, the cultural arts committee to take a look at this.
Okay.
I like that, too. Okay. All right, that's a whole bunch of tasks. John, go ahead.
Just to let you know, I'm, my connection seems to be bad tonight. I keep dropping off. So I've missed a few moments of conversation, so.
We already, we already nominated you to do everything, so.
I think it is much. Okay, no problem.
Punchline, yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, so that's, that's, we've, we've created and delegated several tasks there. Is there anything else you guys want to cover on this one?
No, I think this is going to be an ongoing process. And so, you know, I look forward to hearing the subcommittee coming back with future suggestions. Those come up and they run across them and members of the community suggest things and so on. I think this is you know, I think it's important to act quickly and get things going, but this is not going to be a short, simple process. It's going to be an ongoing thing. So I think that's a good starting point.
Agreed. Okay.
Sounds good.
Jeremy, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just one other thought. We have a very capable communications manager in Kerry. And this may be an issue that the subcommittee can can discuss in some further detail, but and it may be in conjunction with the cultural arts, but there is obviously some initial dialogue that I think the town can have through our communication channels and setting up opportunities for people to give their comments to us now prior to any meeting. So we can certainly look to set something like that up. And I will see Brandy's on the call. I'm creating work, Brandy. I'll talk with Brandy and her team on that, something we can create for you to take a look at in the short term that can support this.
Okay, anything else we need to tackle or address on this one before we before we move on? Knowing that this is the beginning of a long conversation. Okay. All right. Thank you all. We will move on then to item 10, which is Jeremy's report on COVID-19 and our response.
May I, through the chair, make a recommendation that we take a five-minute break?
Yes, absolutely.
Great. I'll stop the recording and we'll be back at, I have 9:06 in five minutes. Thanks.
Okay. Start it again. Are you, Jeremy, are you guys okay with the current order? Or do you want to move ahead to the budget? Just a thought.
Um, well, if through the chair, if if that's your preference, we'd be happy to do that. I'm sure Cindy would be delighted, too.
Cindy and Jim waiting, I thought maybe we could move ahead with the budget and then we could come back to other things. If that's okay.
Sure. All right. Well, we are delighted to be sharing with you what you saw as a new product, something that we've been talking about for a very, very long time. And one of the side effects of everything that we've been dealing with is that it's an opportunity to share a new look for the budget for the town with numbers that we're generally familiar with right now. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Cindy Rhodes, the interim finance director, and then Jim Saka, who's our fiscal consultant. We have a presentation. We're going to take you through some very detailed slides that show what the changes are and what these changes mean. There's, I think there's likely some terms that are unfamiliar or new to us, particularly in Portola Valley, that are used in other budget presentations. So with that, Cindy, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Alps and fellow council members and members of the public. Tonight, we'll be presenting, as Jeremy mentioned, to you the proposed fiscal year 2020, 21 budget. Let me start with sharing my screen and have that slide. Okay. There we go. I hope you can all see that.
Yes.
Okay, great. So we'd like to start tonight, just with the general overview, we will be reviewing the proposed budget. And also looking at our new budget look. Our budget book presentation, we welcome feedback from council and any suggestions for further improvement. And then at the end of the presentation, we will open up for questions and comments. So we'll start out by what makes this budget different from previous budgets that we presented, proposed budgets that we presented to council. So as the the ever-changing impacts from COVID-19 have proven to us, it's also impacted our normal typical process for developing our annual budget. Typically, we start looking at projections and various components of our budget early in the calendar year. And then we move to a heavier role in developing the budget in early March. This time because of the impact of COVID-19 and the shelter-in-place order, it made it significantly difficult for the department heads to come together and evaluate their specific budget units and review what changes would be proposed for fiscal year 2021. Fiscal year 2020, 2021. So in April, the council ultimately endorsed a budget proposal process that would utilize the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget as more of an interim budget, which we would be rolling over from fiscal year 19, 19, 2019, 2020, and adopt that as our budget into the new year. This, this process would allow us to meet all statutory requirements by adopting the budget in light of the current health crisis. In in July, staff will then resume our normal process, our budget process. We will also be reaching out to committees as we typically do for their budget requests as well. And we will be bringing a revision of the adopted fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget to council in September. One of the most significant changes within our budget this time is the the look of the of the budget book, which entails a reorganization of our chart of accounts, which is the foundation of the the town's structure. It's a complete reorganization and development of our of our departments and having them more of a traditional departmental layout, which reviews revenues and expenditures at the department level to more to better forecast what any of those changes would be. So as, as one, one might question, if if we've been doing something a certain way for so long, why change it? By by making this significant change within our budget, it will provide a clearer picture of what our actual general fund sources and requirements are. It will allow for the ability of better forecasting. And it also improves transparency. So I'll take you to kind of through the process of what our budget traditionally has looked like for the past several years. So in this, in this view here, we're looking at a specific budget unit for our permits and fees. Within this, this unit here, there are various and this, again, this is revenue. In this view here, we're looking at multiple line items that would be allocated under multiple departments. So there, it really doesn't lend to a an accurate view of what those revenue sources are for a specific department. And I'll bring you to another view of the expenditure side. And on the expenditure side, we would be looking at sort of the same, the same items, but there isn't a clear picture of what, where those revenue sources are coming from and where the the expenditures would be attributed to. Now, if we move into the our new view, this would be a view that we would be looking at by at the department level. So this way, we could accurately indicate and and display our revenue sources by department. And then within the department have specific divisions, if necessary, to to reflect what those revenues and expenditures would be. This view here would be for the building and planning department, which in our previous the previous slides before showed some of those specific line items, but you wouldn't necessarily know that they were specific to building and planning. In this, in this view, we're looking at categorizing what those revenues, the sources, and what those requirements would be at the department level. So this would be a high-level view of the overall department. Then if we drill down further from the planning and building example, we would then look at the divisions. Within the building and planning department, we would have the planning division. We'd have building and we'd also have code enforcement, code compliance. In this view here of our planning division, we would be able to pull out specific data to accurately reflect what what line items are included in the department. In this view here, we can see what the FTE levels are for a specific department. We can also see what revenue sources are received by the specific department and as well. and as well what those expenditures would be, that impact. And I apologize if it's a little squished here in the actual budget. It's a little easier to read. But this is just more of a, just reflective of the changes and how deeply we can drill down more into the detail. So there's a number of charts and graphs to illustrate those specific numbers within that budget unit. And then, again, if we drill down further, we get specific line items under this general fund table to look at what those revenue sources would be by specific units, whether they're permits, any kind of fees associated, and then any of those overhead costs for a specific department.
Cindy, it's Jeremy. If there's a way to zoom in a little bit or make it a little bit bigger. If not, that's fine. It's just this slide's a little small.
It is small. It is small.
Sorry, I didn't mean to be disruptive.
No, no, not at all. I don't see a way to zoom in.
Okay, that's fine. You can continue. I'm sorry.
No, no worries. So I will continue. Let me make that a little bit better. So with this slide here, we'd like to go over some of the changes that would be reflected in the proposed fiscal year 2020-21 changes to the budget. Overall, it is a rollover budget from the adopted budget from 2019-2020. There are a few changes specifically within the capital improvement program. So it is scaled down and it's not quite the, what we've proposed in the past. What we will be including in this proposal for the new budget year is a total of $101,000 for the capital improvement program. It would consist of $39,000 for an OABAC project, and this is for design services. This was included in the 2019-2020 budget and to, we would be rolling that over into the new fiscal year. Another rollover item is a $7,000 item for schoolhouse EV improvements. And what we were looking at to make that determination is specific projects that would assist or support with our new normal, within COVID-19. So some schoolhouse improvements would help in that effort. We will also be including $10,000 for spring-down Vernal Pond vegetation management, $5,000 for town center. It's undesignated open space maintenance and improvements, $15,000 for town-owned open space support and maintenance. And for those last three items, these are, again, rollover items from the capital improvement project proposed budget that we adopted, that was adopted last year. And this would just support the continued work that began in the 1920 fiscal year through coordination with the town's public works department as well as the conservation committee. So these would be estimates that would take us through those first three months of the budget.
And Cindy, if I may just make a comment here to the last comment that Cindy made, the reason that we're recommending anything in capital improvement is that these are, we think, are important programs and that they would be implemented in the summer. So these were all things that we anticipate working on this summer. And then in the fall, we would be coming forward and having a conversation around whether there's, we expand the capital improvement program, if we pare it down, what that looks like for the rest of the fiscal year. Thanks.
Exactly.
Through the chair, Jeff, can I just ask a question about Cindy's slide or what you just said?
Yeah, go ahead.
Cindy, where in our packet would we find that breakdown you just described of the capital improvement?
You should find that in the capital. Let me see what exactly that would be. There is a... If you go to the capital projects section. So what's great about this presentation of the new budget book is that it's more of an interactive budget. If you go to the main table of contents, you can click directly into capital projects. And then within that, there are specific tables that would outline the changes. I don't see it from this view, though.
I don't recall. Did we add narrative in the front of capital projects to explain the changes?
I'm seeing a description.
It was right below the mission statement. It was at the beginning of the program. I thought we put something in there.
Yeah.
Sorry. I only, because I think we're toggling between the discussion of the changes coming from as a result of Open Gov versus then driving into some specific numbers. And so I'm just trying to figure out which is, which is, how to work with both of them at the same time.
Yeah, why don't we, if I may, why don't we go to the slides that kind of show the old budget and the new budget?
Yeah, we can.
And then once we get through that, we can talk about specific changes.
Sure.
Yeah.
We can do that. Okay. So in this view here, this is the budget comparison of our adopted budget in fiscal year 1920 and the comparison of the new account structure by object. In this view, we can see specifically that the total revenues, and this is for all funds, is that item right there of $7.5 million with an operating transfer in of $109,000. This is a transfer that would go to the transportation fund to support the street resurfacing project. Under the new account structure, let me move my Zoom tiles away. Under the new structure, we would then show and reflect the 109 operating transfer in as a revenue source as well as the appropriated fund balance. So in the past budget presentation, we, it has not been specifically called out the where those sources are coming from to achieve a balanced budget. So this appropriated fund balance would then help us to achieve that that balanced budget view, which would then draw down on our fund balance in order to support the programs. And then if I move over to our next view, so this is our comparison of revenues by department. So this is where you see the actual structure change of our previous categories over to the left in comparison to the ones on the right. And as you can see, the total revenue sources still reflect the same. The capital projects would then also be listed as a revenue source. This would be the departmental and capital reserves category. And then and that's the difference where we would see what the operating transfer in from the prior presentation. And then if we move to our expenditures, on the expenditure side, the prior presentation shows here the capital improvement program is listed at this final item here, $1.3 million. It also reflects the operating transfer out. And then in the, under the new structure, we're reflecting by object, expenditure objects, which also shows the operating transfer out. The fixed assets would be that $101,000 figure that would be in support of the capital improvement program. And then the remaining items that have been pulled out from this proposed budget is what we have categorized down below under reserves. So that would be the difference, the 1.2 figure down below. And then in this view here, under our new structure, we will be looking at the expenditures by department and division. And to go back on our new view and the benefits that we would get out of changing the structure is to really see what those impacts are by department and division, which we have not been able to accurately reflect that in the past. In this new view, there will be some departments or divisions that don't necessarily have a revenue source. So in this, in our new structure, we will be able to accurately reflect what the net town cost will be from general fund to support those specific department units and budget units as well. Again, with this view here, we see the operating transfers out under the prior presentation. And then under the new presentation, we actually have it within the capital projects, some non-departmental as well. And the field rentals will actually reflect some of that capital projects as well.
Could we go back? I just want to recap. Yeah, so what I want to say is just that, presentation aside, the only real changes in this budget are the 2021 budget has 216,000 in fund balance. We can actually remove that. Here's the, as Cindy was saying, your budget was out of balance last year and that it wasn't out of balance. It's just that you draw on fund balance and you don't show that. So if you're looking at your budget, the expenditures exceeded revenues by 216. So I put the 216 in thinking we were going to do a full rollover with no changes. So something for you to consider in two weeks when you approve the budget is we could take that 216 out now because essentially with the changes to capital at this point, you have basically a surplus of 1.2 million. So we could actually take the fund balance out and reduce the reserves and it's still balanced if you wanted to do that. You don't need the fund balance because you're, you don't need it to balance the budget. And then that's one change. And then the other change is simply the reduction of capital from 1,239 to 101,000. So those are the two changes other than, you know, the enormous presentation changes we're making. So. So you can go in. I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. So in this next one.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Ann.
And Jim, Cindy, I'm appreciative of this being a multifaceted endeavor in terms of a whole new way of presenting. But I'm kind of stuck on one very basic comparison that I made independent of what you're showing me now, Cindy, which was, and what you just showed now, which is a budget sort of revenue stream of about $7.9 million, you know, in this. And in just trying to see where we were a year ago, I went back to our sort of published budget that we had. And our revenues in that last year were at, you know, $2.3 million less on our published budget. There are 5.722 versus. So that's why I've just, I just want to make sure we frame this because if I'm having trouble grasping it at that level, I'm sure there's many other things that are difficult to comprehend here.
Yeah, let me point that out. Yeah, so for the presentation purposes, because this was kind of put together this afternoon, what we're showing here is all funds. So this includes general fund and non-general fund. So had we shown just general fund, you would have seen the 5.722.
22.
Whatever that number was.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. To, moving on to the slide. In our proposed budget, some items that we would be looking to consider in our revised proposal in September is the review of property tax growth. We may not see the direct impact of COVID-19 as it relates to property tax quite yet. That might be something that we will actually begin to see in fiscal year 2021-2022. But it would be a good time to review that and follow through with an analysis. Also, our sales tax revenues and what COVID-19 has that direct impact on small businesses, local small businesses. Also, ERAF. There is, and this is our education revenue augmentation fund. So there is currently some discussion going on between the state and ERAF counties within California. There's a current dispute going on with the, how those revenues are calculated. So there's ongoing discussion on that, which may impact the amount of revenue sources that we would be receiving in the upcoming fiscal year. So again, we will bring more information as that's available in September. We will also be revisiting the licenses and permits and what those impacts will be in our revenue sources. As there, you know, there may be decline in applications or projects within town. Also, our field rentals, our field rentals, as well as our classes, our recreation class program. We may see continued decline in revenues within those specific budget units as events are canceled and reduced revenue for field use as well as our classes. Some other items to to consider for our upcoming budget, as far as the expenditures go, would be COVID-related expenses. We're looking into increased janitorial services and what those cost impact will be. Additional purchases to support social distancing within town hall. Additional costs with software as we are looking into specific services and products that we can offer to the residents, which would reduce the amount of direct contact. Our consultant costs, what, looking into, again, COVID and what those impacts will be on our use of consultants. And then as well as revisiting our capital improvement program as we've currently have held on the the big ticket item, which is our street resurfacing program, which is currently on hold. So it's something that we'd like to to revisit and discuss at a future time in regards to the the capital improvement program. And then I'd like to move on to next steps and what we'd like to consider moving forward. In July, we would begin to resume our normal, what we would consider our normal process, budget process. So the the budget team would come together, analyze our available data at at the time and go through any projections for revenues and expenditures. We will also begin to work with our department heads so that they could develop and analyze their own specific budget units and load those requests into our OpenGov system. And as we move forward in the month of August, we will meet with those department heads to review their specific requests and and just have a more involved discussion on how we move forward with that and finalize those those requests. We'd also be requesting from our specific committees for their their budget requests as well. And move forward with finalizing our our budget document and proceed with scheduling some time with our finance committee as we have accustomed to to do in the past and get their feedback as well as suggestions for for the the budget. And and then in September, we'd like to provide the council a revised budget for their review, set a public hearing, and then at the end of the month, have a final budget adoption. And with that, I would like to open up for any additional questions or comments.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Jim. Questions, Ann? It looks like you're ready to ask question.
Sure. And and thank you both for all the work you've done. And obviously, it's a very unusual time. I guess my first question would probably go to less specifics on the budget that you just presented, Cindy, and did a great job in sort of articulating. I think that at least I can only speak for myself. But when I started to review this, I was really struggling to make the transition from the old to the new. And to understand where the UUT had gone in our revenue side, you know, because we're all very, and that's just using a great example of a major source of revenue. And and to make sure that in going through this budget, we all understood what we were looking at. And I can honestly say that I didn't feel comfortable having spent a lot of time with this budget in the past and knowing it pretty pretty well relative to how we how we had always laid it out. I was, it's difficult without a roadmap of how to translate from the old to new to really be able to react to this one. And I would be interested to hear if my other colleagues felt the same way. But as I tried to review it, I think in the long term, I, there's no doubt in my mind that this system will be a good one. But in this compressed time period that we're now left with for an approval of this interim budget, it makes me a little bit uncomfortable that if I'm having trouble understanding how we've translated from one to the next, I'm I'm wondering if others in the group are as well.
Anyone want to comment on that?
Jeff, before we get to that, Cindy, can you stop sharing the screen so everybody can see everybody?
Oh, sure. There we go.
Mary Ann's got her hand up. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Yes, I was a little confused. I was telling Jeremy that it, I don't know, did I tell Jeremy this or somebody? That it was like a mother-in-law came into my kitchen and decided to completely rearrange it. And I couldn't, it's like, where's the garlic press? Where's the strainer? Where's the big spoon? I had no idea what I was looking at.
I'll second that. I was, I'm sorry, it was, it's going to take an adjustment for sure. I think I think it'll it'll help to have it in a slightly larger format so I can see the seat a little bit easier. It's a little small on the screen, even going directly into OpenGov. It's awkward to zoom in and so. I think the, I think I agree with Ann. I think it looks like it has potential. I'd be more comfortable saying that when I understand it a little better.
Craig, go ahead.
Yeah, I have to say, you know, when I first thought, like Ann, I was having trouble mapping the old to the new. You know, the old was convoluted and we're all used to having to look for all these hidden things and trace them through and figure out, okay, where is that supposed to, you know, what does that actually mean? Oh, yeah, got to remember to think that that's offset by the thing on page 73. And mapping that old messed up way of thinking about our budget because of the complexity of how it was structured and and adapting that to this new budget is is definitely hard to do. And I'm not fully there yet either. However, if I, what I did is I just, I I kind of just set aside the old budget. I didn't didn't look at the old budget side by side with the new one. And just looking at the new one by itself, it's so much clearer. It's so much easier to understand. It's so much, there are little things here and there where I'm like, well, maybe I would have, you know, grouped those differently and things like that. But by and large, it's just part of the reason that it's difficult to compare the old and the new is just because the old was just, it was old and it needed updating. And and so I I do think we need, you know, all of us need to do more work to get more familiar with this and really understand it. And I don't know if, you know, having a a working session or something where we put together our questions and and go through them. I don't know if if doing it in a council meeting with a whole bunch of other agenda items is is the most best way of doing it. I think that, you know, I I think typically we sort of hash through it at the finance committee. So at least by the time Ann and I arrive at this meeting, we already have kind of predigested. There may be still a number of questions we have. We've we've kind of got the basics down. This presentation tonight has been very, very helpful, Cindy. Thanks a lot and and Jim. I think it's it's helped me understand some of that mapping and transition better. I still, as I say, don't fully get it. But I, the more I I look at and consider the new form by itself as opposed to by comparison to the old one, the more comfortable I am with it. You know, in every case where I've said, oh, where did that go to? I have been able to kind of trace it through and the numbers do seem to match. So it does, it does line up that that part I'm I'm more confident about. But there there definitely is a mental exercise to retrain ourselves to think about this budget and and to think about the the whole way our finances are structured and presented just in a different way. And in a lot of, in in most of the cases that I was going through it, it's like saying, oh, I I don't need to do it the old way anymore. I don't need to track all this stuff. It's just, it's right there and it's a little more straightforward. There's a, there's a bit more, you know, what I call inter-account transfers that show up, which is a little trickier to kind of wrap your head around exactly where the money is flowing through capital improvements. And some of these, some of these other fund transfers are, that that part's a little trickier because it's, it's, you know, it's not really money moving. It's just you're, you're just transferring it between internal accounts. And so really understanding, you know, what's an actual expense versus what's just a fund transfer. We we might be able to to split that out in a way that makes it a little more clear. But overall, you know, I I I'm really happy with the the result of the work you guys have put into it. It's it's, it makes it much easier to see where we spend our money and not just to know that, oh, it's consultants, but actually understand, you know, where the consultants are working, what they're working on, what what, excuse me, what revenues are offsetting that work and that kind of stuff. So it's, it it's just a vast improvement over where we were. And it's going to need a little bit of, I think, tweaking here and there to tighten some things up and a lot more, you know, better understanding by all of us of how the new system works and where we can see the things that we're used to seeing and what things we don't need to be worrying about seeing anymore because they're just, you know, those artifacts are just gone now. But I I I don't completely disagree, Ann. I think it definitely, it needs a lot of time and thought and and explanation and kind of working through it and saying, okay, where did this go? And really tracing that out. And I I certainly have not done enough of that yet to really be fully comfortable that I understand all of it. But it's the the new form, just so much easier to see and see where things go and where they belong and what's offsetting what. So it's 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 overall very positive.
Yeah, I I agree. I don't, I there's still, I still have some learning curve on it. But I it's much more intuitive the way it's organized now. I agree. Other questions or comments for Cindy? Craig, go ahead.
I think you're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry, I didn't realize. I didn't mean to myself. At the top of most of the departmental sections, there's a section on salaries where there are salaries in those departments. And one thing I found is that it's, I think it would be helpful to have salaries and benefits there so that it really helps you understand what the total personnel cost is. Because certainly, at least for some of our positions, the the non-salary, you know, cash that we have to pay out in order to employ someone. I think having that in that summary section at the beginning, in addition to the to the straight salaries would be helpful just to get a better picture of, okay, this is our employee cost versus, you know, our other costs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that. One of the things I I want to just point out too is that, well, a couple of things. One is, we kind of threw this together and then we had to, we used the open, I mean, we, in terms of the presentation, we used OpenGov's Stories platform to put this together. I mean, I think one of the things we can look at in the future is a third-party, you know, publishing company like Workiver or somebody that can, it doesn't have to be a huge book, but maybe put something together that's 30, 40 pages that's easy to read. You know, so that's something we should work on, I definitely think. And the other thing I want to comment on, I appreciate your comment about seeing things that maybe they're not in the right spot. I mean, that would be good feedback if anybody, you know, I mean, so why is, you know, why is this fee under licenses and permits or why is it here or there? I mean, we can change those things. So if something doesn't, you know, this is like a working, you know, working thing. So if something doesn't look right and you think it belongs somewhere else, we're definitely open to that for sure.
I would also add, building on Jim's comments, that OpenGov, you know, every week they seem to tweak or change and and have new updates. And they certainly receive feedback on from us on, you know, how to continue to improve the the presentation. You know, and I'm hopeful they get to a place where we don't have to consider anything like that. I, you know, even I, as I, you know, it took me a little while to get used to it and to go, now I know where things are and understand where things, how it's supposed to look. But I think OpenGov, just as a partner, has been pretty strong in taking our input as a valued customer and trying to make those modifications. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, one of the other things I want to point out about working, you know, again, OpenGov's a new system and they're still working on things too. Because right now, whether we leave fund balance in there or not is not the point. But right now, they don't have the ability to show fund balance as a separate funding source. It's just part of revenues. And I mean, a fully, you know, the budget systems I'm familiar with, you know, you can show revenues and then you can show fund balance, fund balance as a separate source. And those two things together equal total sources. Right now, fund balance is shown as a revenue. It's just, it's a system limitation. Same thing with reserves. Reserves should be separated from expenditures. They don't have the capability to do that right now. And then the other thing that just, that was kind of weird. But right now, the system is set up to show, when you look at the bottom line, it's revenues minus expenditures. And normally, if you're showing, you know, quote unquote, net town cost or what's the cost this department provides, you normally would show expenditures minus revenues. Net town cost would be a positive cost, not a negative. So there's some little tweaks that the system, it's kind of still maturing that need to be worked out.
Ann, go ahead.
To the chair, I guess the, and and I have no doubt that longer term, this is going to be a huge improvement. So, you know, to be very clear on that, I'm not at all questioning our decision to use OpenGov. What I'm looking at now, though, is sort of where we are tonight on June 10th, which is being asked to approve a budget that I, by our own admission, even though Craig, it sounds like you've spent the most time diving down. I don't really understand fully what's in this budget. And so I'm struggling with how to, what the next steps are. Because we kind of put ourselves into a bind relative to the timing to have this initial review and then a public hearing, you know, by the end of June to get this in place. Because I think that it's going to be, in order to get all of us over that and we will all be at different places on how quickly we'll get over that hurdle. But I think everybody will get there. But we just need to have a tutorial of some kind. And I'm not sure I know the answer, what that would be, to at least make it very clear what we're approving. Because again, I have a level of discomfort when, and I have a pretty strong background in finance. And it's not that I couldn't approve it without some much deeper dive. But tonight I was having to manage both the changes I was looking at and then try and look at the numbers and see where they came from relative to our old budget. So that's why I was on the old budget, trying to pull them over and foot them. And and that's not a good exercise to do. It would be much easier, I think, for anybody who is not, who doesn't spend that much time in finance and all of us to say, okay, forget that concept. And you described it, Jim, and Cindy too, both very well, which is, we're going to a departmental approach. And that in and of itself changes how we're going to look at our revenue sources and, you know, and sort of break it down at the highest level. And then it's easier for any of us to translate it into what we're seeing under your new budget, under the new budget. So again.
So I have a, I have an idea. So when you look at the old format and the new format, there's one constant that didn't change, and that's the funds. So one thing we could do is that at the fund level, you know, create a spreadsheet for you where you would see the general fund revenues, you know, for 1920 and 2021. And then you would, we'd show you the revenues and expenditures in the 1920 budget and the 2021 budget at the fund level. Where you wouldn't have to say, well, this was in consulting services and this was in this. You're just going to look at the general fund. You're going to look at the gas tax. You're going to look at, I mean, that's one thing you could do, I think. And you wouldn't have to, you know, struggle between the two things because we didn't change the funds. The funds are the same as they were previously.
So be essentially, I think what you're saying, Jim, is like page 75, but do the same, you know, the the same one, but for the prior year, where it just shows all the funds. It's got the revenues broken down. It's got the expenditures.
Yeah, we do a crosswalk, you know. Yeah. Compare the two years at the fund level. And we could even, you know, create a column. We could even have four or five columns. We could have, you know, for, let's just say we're doing the general fund. You could have a column that shows the old kind of quote unquote department name and the new department name and then have the account number. And then the 1920 budget, the 2021 budget. You know, we could set it up so you can kind of, it'd be easy for us to do. We have the information. Just got to download it. Or, you know, you guys could create a sub, maybe next week and we could put together some stuff and tell us which one you like. I mean, you know what I'm saying? We could put together. I I'd hate to bring. I mean, you know what I'm saying, we could put together, I I'd hate to bring you something in two weeks and then you don't like it. So maybe we can prepare something and then somebody can bless it before we.
Well, and I think the the part of it that was, is hard out in this situation too, is that the finance committee normally would have reviewed this before we saw it. And I'm not sure how we got out of order on that, but but it it doesn't, I mean, I think it's it's making it more difficult because I think they might have signaled and looked at a lot of these issues too. So looking, I I'm open to suggestions of how to how to solve it for sure. And and I think yours sounds like a good start, Jim, I think. But it would probably be useful to have at least two eye, sets of eyes looking at it. To to make sure that that it answers the questions at a level that everybody can at least feel like they understand what they're approving.
Yeah.
I do want to say, though, that we we did use the Government Finance Officers Association guidelines. So it's, well, what you're getting here is, I know it's difficult to compare old to new, but this is the direction governments are going.
I I completely appreciate that. And you know, that's that, I think, is very much the way we'll go too. Obviously, this is where we're going, so.
Craig, go ahead.
One thing I might suggest, if um, i- i- if if we can figure out how to schedule it, would be, you know, because I I think you're right, Anne. You know, normally, a lot of this stuff, we we've already kind of hashed out in the finance committee or they've hashed out. And we've been there, throwing in our questions and trying to understand it ourselves. And by, so by the time we get to this, we've, we've had that first pass or two already. Um, and that hasn't happened this year. And I I I don't think there's a finance committee meeting, maybe there's one.
Next week.
There's one next week, yeah. I I think that may be helpful to some degree, but it may also be useful, as you suggested, to have a, you know, at least a subcommittee. And maybe, you know, each individual council member just schedules some time to work through it with staff and really get that level of comfort, I think. Because it is, it is quite a difference. And I think we'll each have, you know, different questions about, oh, where did this go? Where did that go? How do I, how am I supposed to understand that, the way that it's phrased now as opposed to how it used to be? And um, you know, other than really kind of s- sitting down and asking those questions and 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 um, you know, going through it essentially together, or I mean, each individually together with staff, not necessarily all as a group together, which would require a public meeting, but to 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 really, you know, get that better understanding through working through it. As opposed to, you know, a presentation or or a a larger meeting where it's harder to kind of really dig into all of the issues and trace things through. And um, you know, have seven people listening to one person go through their particular thing and and doing that seven times. So I I I think um, i- i- if we could, if we could set something like that up and whether whether that's before or after the finance committee meeting. Because as you say, I think they'll they'll have some useful input as well. I I just, I I I don't know if staff has any thoughts on on whether that makes sense, how we might do it. Um, and how it fits in with the timing, which is, you know, it's coming back in two weeks for ideally some kind of approval.
To the chair, so just a couple of thoughts. I mean, I I absolutely support um, the the creation of a a kind of a walkthrough document and opportunity to sit down with each council member. Because it it it, um, you know, I think, as Craig was saying, I think it's just spending time with it. And um, once getting used to that presentation, uh, everything's here. It's this, it's exactly the same numbers. I'm, I if if it's the council's wish, and we can certainly do something at at finance, but we would be doing the same thing we'd be doing with council members, which is simply taking them through and showing them where numbers are. And um, you know, at this point, I I'm not sure that that's necessary related to what the task is at hand. So I think that Cindy and Jim and I can schedule time with each of the five council members to to go through that and show where things are. Because there, it's all here. So just offer that, thank you.
Craig, go ahead.
Th- th- there's one other thing, I think, in all of this, which is that, um, you know, in in three months, we kind of get a do-over, or we get a second pass at it too. So really, you know, the 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 budget that we're putting in place here, I I, we definitely need to understand it better. But it's, um, you know, the the intention is not for this to really truly be the budget for the full year. It's kind of a a an interim or temporary budget, if you will. So so the level of comfort that I feel I would need to approve it, uh, you know, from June to September is a little bit lighter than what what I would otherwise need if it really was, you know, the real budget for the full year. And so I I think that gives us a little bit of an opportunity to, um, you know, understand what we need to. And then over the course of the next three months, really get that level of understanding that we'll really need to approve the real budget when that comes forward in September. Which may be a a little bit of a higher bar from an education and and really familiarity point of view.
I I would say through the chair too, it's also going to be easier to prove in September because you would have seen it a few times. So there would have already been a level of comfort related to that. So that's that's, that was one of the hopes of our, you know, side effect of all this COVID is that we're bringing forward the same numbers.
I just wanted to say that I I appreciate all of your your feedback and and suggestions. And and I also um, had the same level of, at first looking at it, it's just so very different. So it 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 was difficult to kind of grasp that new um, that new structure. And so Jim, um, and Jeremy and I have had, have had a lot more time with it and we've been in it a lot more to really pinpoint where specific lane items are and to to really know exactly where all of these components are 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 living now. But yeah, we definitely appreciate the feedback and suggestions and 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 how we can continue to improve it. Like um, Jim has said, um, this is still, it's it's still a living document. We're still continuing to to um, make improvements on it.
I would say too, that, you know, we gave some consideration of what other alternative ways to to show this. And like, you know, at one point, I was batting around my head, coming to counsel a little earlier, but without numbers. And I just, I I couldn't make that work in a way that I thought made any sense. So I thought the best way was to bring forward what we had and, you know, have the conversation, however, um, you know, complicated it may be. The alternatives just weren't um, weren't as attractive as that. So, you know, maybe picking the best of a series of options that don't look super great. Thanks.
So i- ideally, I think we'd like to approve this, we'd like to have the hearing on the twenty-fourth. Is there a way we can, can people find a way to get comfortable with this between now and the twenty-fourth would be my question? Uh, Anne, go ahead.
I think, you know, to be honest, I I like Craig's idea of um, each of us investing the time with Jim and Cindy and Jeremy. And and I apologize in advance that that might be longer for some of us than others. And but I want to also just be cognizant or just want to reflect on, see whether Mary Ann and John and you Jeff would be, because obviously Craig floated the idea, so I know he is comfortable with trying to, you know, get the, get up to speed on the new system well enough that you could say, okay, now I know where the utility users' tax is. I know, I know where it's resident and I know how I can find it. And or at least understand if our revenues are dropping in that one arena. It's easy for me to be able to look at that and see it and et cetera, et cetera. And rather, because I frankly, am not too focused yet on giving input on the system until I understand it. So, you know, and once I think I have a better understanding of it and feel like I can at least understand the the main parts of the budget, then 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 I think that second phase will hit by the time we do it in September.
So when is the, uh, when's the finance committee meeting?
Next, the twelfth, is it, let's see what day is that?
It's Wednesday.
It's Wednesday, a week from today, yeah, a week from today.
So so Craig, you and you and Anne, you and Craig are going to sit down with the finance committee and go through the same budget that we're going through now.
Yeah, I only blocked out an hour for that, though, in my guess, having seen, having seen this, is that that is not probably likely.
And through the chair, we, through the chair, we had not anticipated bringing the budget halfway through this process to the finance committee at this point. We were going to, you know, we're taking the audit next week. So I'm um, you know, candidly, I'm I'm reluctant to have a full-blown conversation with the finance committee to do what it sounds like would be doing with individual council members anyway. Which is to take you through and show you where things are. Um, and I I I think, I think it, I actually don't think it's a, it would be a fairly long process for any council member. I think there's certain issues that each council member is going to ask, where are these things? And we'll show them and that will hopefully be um, useful. So I'm, if it's the desire of the council to have the finance committee look at it through that lens, we will absolutely do that. But um, that's a very, very different meeting than we anticipated. And I'm not, I'm not sure in its utility on that narrow band. Having a conversation with them over the summer about all of this is something we absolutely want to do. We've talked to them in the past generally about what this looks like and they've endorsed it. They'll certainly have an opinion on specific elements of it and and what makes some sense. And we want to continue to do that. We wanted to hear from you first um, to see what that uh, that felt like, that that's that's the plan for the summer, absolutely. Thanks.
So, you know, I.
Through the chair, that's a good, that's a good point, Jeremy. I agree that that it doesn't, I think that we would get way, we would have no chance of getting a budget approved by the end of the month if the finance committee was trying to fully digest the changes.
So if this is help, I, you know, it, I mean, I'm basically going to repeat what Anne asked, that just what the pleasure of the council is, is it relates to the next, you know, call it week and a half. Very happy to set up meetings to go through this with with everybody. We've got uh, the time absolutely to do that. And and I think, I think that will bring a lot of relief.
Can we each on the council commit to scheduling a, you know, a time next week with staff to uh, and I guess I'm saying, but with with maybe with, it would be with the three of you, with Jeremy, Jim and and Cindy? Or 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 some subset of their, would everyone be comfortable trying to find a time? And John, go ahead.
Yeah, I I think, well, what I personally prefer to do is give a little, I haven't had a lot of time to look at it anyway, to begin with. I think I, I think I'll be able to figure it out enough that I'll be comfortable with questions that I can either ask Jeremy or or Cindy or Jim. And I I don't think I need really to schedule an appointment at this point. I think I'd be be better off, the way I work anyways, just to dig into it myself and and get to a point where I'm better able to ask the right questions. If that works out with you guys. And I I I'm pretty sure I can do that with the next week and week and a half, that problem.
So everyone else comfortable with that?
Yeah, I I am, I I just, you know, it may, it may be helpful to, you know, just hop on a Zoom call for fifteen minutes or twenty to 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 walk through a question or two. And I don't think it necessarily needs to be all three. It's really, you know, it's 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 more answering questions and getting familiar and comfortable. So so, you know, any one of the three probably would be, would be plenty.
That's probably true.
For me, anyway.
Okay. So we think we could, we can keep our timeline as it is and plan on the on the hearing for the twenty-fourth, as long as everyone will will sort of get themselves to a comfortable place with us between now and then?
And I would offer through the chair that if um, any individual council member has an issue, we will uh, come up with an alternative system here. We'll we'll figure that out if it, I mean, I, I'm certainly not recommending this, but if it means that we take the numbers and put them back in the old system. That's not, uh, I I I don't know that that's necessarily challenging. It'll look, it'd be familiar, um, and it's, we're just moving columns over. So it will obviously have some of the, you know, the new ideas in, um, that they won't be there anymore. But I mean, if if we get to that point and that's what makes the collective council comfortable, then we'll, we'll bring that forward. I commit, I commit my time to that.
Anne, go ahead.
I don't, I don't think anybody wants that, Jeremy. I think, I think we're all moving forward with you. So I don't think that was ever the discussion. I think it's just about having enough information to be able to to make any kind of a what I'd call a meaningful review of what Cindy presented tonight, which was a drill down in the budget. So it it was, it's too much to ask people to look at a new system and then approve all of the numbers that are in it with it, with the number of changes that were there. So that's, that was really my hesitation. And I, like others, will look, spend more time with it and then probably call Jim and Cindy and, you know, have whatever questions I have. And and I'm sure that'll be fine, um, and that'll work certainly for my side.
We look forward to continue to share this with you guys. We're, I mean, you could tell that there's a lot of enthusiasm about this and bringing our systems up to a modern standard. So um, I hope we can answer all your questions.
Yeah, you know, I'm willing to, um, next Wednesday, I mean, I'll keep my calendar open. If folks want to set up a Zoom meeting or maybe Cindy can set them up, we can, you know, go through it somehow, we'll figure it out.
Yes.
Okay. I think each of us will kind of be on their, each council member will be on their own to kind of reach out to to staff and
or whatever works.
And make sure they're just, we're comfortable with this for the following meeting. Do we need to take an action to set that hearing or is, can we just direct staff to set a hearing for the twenty-fourth?
It's just regular agenda, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You you can um, direct staff to do that.
So there's no, there's no action required tonight, that's my only question. Okay. Okay, uh, any other questions or comments on the budget item?
One, one quick thank you to Jim and Cindy. So it is obviously been a whale of a lot of work as you're transitioning to the new system. And we will all get there, so, but I think it, uh, this will be a good, good change.
Yes.
Well, I mean, we identified the need to reorganize this budget, you know, back when Nick was our town manager. So I, it's this changes, I mean, there's been many, many things have stopped us from moving forward, but it's it's overdue. And and I'm glad that we're doing it and it's just going to take some time and effort to get used to the new system. So thank you all.
Thank you. And thank you for the feedback. It it, we're excited about making this an even better product, so really appreciate it tonight.
Jim, I don't know if there is any, but I don't know if the public has any comment.
Oh, uh, yeah, thank you for reminding me. Yeah, does there any public comment on the budget? I do not see any hands up. So we can move on. Jeremy, is there anything, like, do you want to bring the business license extension up first or do you?
No, um, I'm doing that on my, uh, actually, let's, let's do that since Brandy's here, just in case there's any questions, but I'm happy to do that now.
So our, our next item will be item thirteen, which is the business license renewal extension. Go ahead, Jeremy.
Thank you, Mayor House, members of the council. So the staff in working through the variety of COVID-related issues that we've heard from those we serve, one idea that we wanted to bring to you was, in lieu of requesting people now pay for their business license, their hundred-three business license for, a hundred-three dollars for their business license next year, that we extend the current business license a quarter, three months for, without asking for any additional dollars. Um, and then in September, come back to our business license community. And for the nine-month remaining period of the fiscal year, charge them for the license at that point. It's a very small gesture, but we thought it was important to continue to show that the town is trying to find ways to uh, help in any way that they can, as as businesses are dealing with this. We recognize that there are businesses that are doing uh, business again. But in lieu of going out to each one of them and asking what level we're working at, we just thought that this was the most equitable way, should the council wish to support this kind of, uh, this kind of gesture. So with that, I turn it over to the mayor, thank you.
Okay, uh, any questions for Jeremy? Okay, uh, are we, sorry, are we taking an action on this?
I'm, yeah, the action would be to um, allow us to um, operate the business license program in the, in the method you've seen before you. Um, I'm not sure what a car, maybe you've got a better way to describe that. But um, since this is all by ordinance, we we just need to uh, allow this under the the emergency powers that I have right now.
Okay. So I mean, do we need a motion to authorize that or? So I mean, do we need a motion to authorize that?
Yes. You do need a motion, yes. And the motion is to extend the business license through October 1, 2020 for all existing businesses with no additional charge.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Oh.
I'll second it. I, I would just add the comment that I, I think this is a really good idea, especially since I think we have a, a number of other actions that we've taken that depend on businesses being in good standing with their licenses paid up and so forth. And so providing this extension, it, it's not just the postponing of collecting the money for the business license by three months, but it also helps businesses make sure that they don't fall out of compliance with their business licensing in this time period and then lose out on whatever other benefits there may be that depend on them being fully paid up. So I, I think this is a great idea and, you know, depending on how things go in October, we might want to even look at it again then. But for now, I'm very supportive.
Yeah, I, I thought it was a good idea too. Okay, we have a motion by Mary Ann and do we have a second?
I seconded it.
I seconded it, sorry. Any public comment on this item? Okay, I don't see any. Is there any further discussion from the council? Okay. Any opposed? Do, do we need a roll call vote or could I just? Roll call, okay. Sharon, roll call vote please.
Technically with, with these, with Zoom meetings, the law does require a roll call vote.
Okay, yeah.
For all items.
Councilmember Richards?
Hi.
Councilmember Hughes?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Derwin?
Hi.
Mayor Alfs?
Hi.
Did we get Ann?
Did Ann vote?
We did. I, I, she, I think she didn't know that she was muted. Sharon, you might want to call my name again because I didn't hear it. We didn't hear it.
Councilmember Wengert?
Aye.
There we go. Great.
How much work for a unanimous vote. Okay. Thank you. Okay. That brings us to item, back to item 10, which is Jeremy's report on COVID-19 response. Go ahead, Jeremy.
So I, I wanted to just focus my comments tonight on, which is a very big deal for staff, which is starting Monday, staff will be back in the building. This does not mean that we're available for the public to enter the building at this point. We're working up to that. Going into the building at this time allows staff to start to remember what it's like to work with colleagues after three months, to prepare the building in ways to allow for appointments when we are accepting members of the public and residents to come in and engage with us. So that means preparing the building. That means coming up with the systems that will make the building work better for everyone. A tremendous amount of work went into the plan that you saw recently. Brandy, again, thank you. Laura Howard. Everyone's participated in this, but particularly Brandy for putting it together. So we're, we're very excited to be moving into this next phase. We hope we learn a lot from it. We hope we learn that we'll be able to accommodate ourselves and accommodate appointments in the coming weeks. So we'll be reaching out obviously to the council and the subcommittee that's been working on COVID issues in the, the coming period of time to let you know when we're ready to do that. Some of that is going to be determined by when we receive some supplies. Protective screens and things of that nature are somewhat difficult to come by at this point. So we put in our orders, but we're waiting to hear back. I've, I've taken the, the liberty of providing staff with a modest $100 allowance to spend on COVID related materials. Primarily, we think that they, that folks are going to spend it on masks and the like. We're also, because we're restricting the way our kitchen sort works, I think people are going to be buying coolers for their, for their lunches. So that's really the big thing. I think we're all in a waiting period as the state makes further listings of the, of the current order, current revised order. We know that the county will follow those afterwards. So that's, I think where we are at. I am, I'm inclined with the permission of the council to actually suspend these regular updates as a standing item in further, at further meetings and instead include any items in my regular report towards the end of the meeting. I think we're at that point where that makes a lot of sense. I think that that also helps restore in a small, small way, another level of normalcy to what we've been doing. You know, as you've seen in the last couple of meetings, my reports have gotten a little smaller, a little shorter, if you will. So if that's okay with everyone, that would be my suggestion moving forward. Maybe, maybe I do one more in, in June. But that's my report. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions on, on that report? I, I think that's, I think, I think your suggestion is fine. I would be fine with, with becoming part of your regular report.
Thank you.
That brings us to item 11, which is an extension of local emergency declaration for COVID. Jeremy, again.
Yeah, you're familiar with this. This is another round of potential extension in the local emergency order. Both Cara and I believe that there's still validity in keeping it in place because it allows us to be nimble. We recommend 30 days here, but I would like to throw out a potential amendment to that. As the council members know, we're looking at canceling the July 8th council meeting, which would mean that an extension, either we would, we need to hold the meeting to do a further extension if, if it's 30 days or we can look at a 45 day extension, which would take us to the second meeting in July. I don't know if Cara, you have anything to add, but there does still seem to be utility in preserving this. The flexibility to respond on a moment's notice to issues is important. It's also been appreciated to have, you know, particularly when there's expenditures that we need to make, particularly preparing the building and the like, to have that flexibility. I think we've held it up very responsibly for the public. Cara, do you have any other thoughts?
Thank you. You know, unfortunately, the, the medical evidence is that it's, it's likely that we will have a, a second wave in the fall. And as you say, Jeremy, it's, it's important to be nimble and, and be prepared. And we're not, we're not yet at the, you know, in, in normal operations. So we do recommend extending, extending the order.
Ann, go ahead.
Just one quick question. When does the county's order expire? The next deadline?
It's indefinite.
It's open ended like the state's order is at this point.
Okay.
We, we're recommending this with, I think as Cara was intimating a bit of a heavy heart. It isn't something that we wish to continue to have to do, but given that it has proved useful, we think it's the prudent. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree. Any other comments on this one? Craig, go ahead.
Yeah, I think similarly to the, the business license issue, it's, it's not merely, you know, the, the authority that it gives to Jeremy and the flexibility it gives to staff to react to things. But we at this point have tied other things to the continuing state of emergency. And as Cara pointed out, you know, from a medical point of view, it is, this virus still with us. It still has tremendous potential to cause a lot of damage in the community. And we need to be aware of that and, and be responsive to it. So I'm very supportive of, of, of doing the 45 day extension to make sure that we, you know, keep it going until we have a chance to meet again and, and review it again. And I, I very much sadly expect that, you know, we'll be continuing to do these renewals for a number of more months.
Yeah, unfortunately, I think you're right. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, I do not see any.
Just again, the recommendation though is if, if we do want to cancel the 8th, which we don't have any other items currently planned for that agenda, this would be a 45 day extension, not a 30 day extension.
Right. Yeah.
Make a motion to extend the, the declaration of emergency for another 45 days.
Second.
Okay. Moved by John, seconded by Craig. Any further discussion, comments? Okay, roll call vote, Sharon?
Councilmember Wengert?
Aye.
Councilmember Richards?
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Derwin?
Aye.
Mayor Alfs?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to 14. This is liaison reports. Ann, do you have any report?
Yeah, actually I had three. It was a busy period, but I'll be fast. CCG finance committee had an unprecedented three meetings relative to the approval of the budget. It really related to a proposal to potentially, there was reduce the amount of member fees that were going to be payable by all of the participating cities and towns. And I think Sharon, you're, you're not muted.
Sorry, the cat's asking to go out.
But anyway. And so there was initially a, we had one meeting to discuss it and had to reconvene because we didn't have time to finish. When we came back, we had voted one way and then we were informed by Sandy Wong that in fact, we didn't have all of the information relative to how, what the implications would be of the recommendation that had been approved. So we came back and revisited it the third time and ultimately approved the ability of any municipality that chooses, well, not chooses, we're going to encourage everyone to pay their membership fees in full as do, you know, this year. But in the event that they were having budgetary, you know, restraints or constraints that would make that prohibitive for them, that they were, they have the ability to defer up to half of their fees for one year's time. And the way that we backstop that is that instead of, if that, if those monies aren't repaid within that year, then some of the disbursements that CCG would make under the same programs would be reduced by the amount of their outstanding fee balance. So we had a backstop for it. And I think that finally satisfied the whole group's concerns relative to all, any number of issues. So it was unprecedented. Three, three different meetings on that one thing, followed by the San Francisco roundtable. That's been super busy. Number of meetings with the FAA and in Zoom calls over the last few weeks. And the good news is, is that they have assembled quite a team on the FAA side for the first time since we had the select committee in 2017 and are approaching a lot of the issues. In particular, they're working on one of the major night routes called Night Hush, which is a departure route that's being requested to fly over the bay and then out to the ocean before it turns south and other directions. And it has been a longstanding request of the FAA to potentially, why not? Why can't they revisit that and make those changes in those low traffic periods? And particularly now, obviously with very low traffic. But anyway, bottom line is they have come to the table. There have been a number of discussions that Night Hush will be on the next agenda. And at the same time, they've also indicated a willingness to support a regional body to work on these issues amongst the roundtables. I think I mentioned that before. So it would be the SCSC, Santa Cruz, Santa Clara and Oakland and the San Francisco. So what they've asked is that we do that rather than on a general basis, meaning don't form another ad hoc committee or, you know, select committee, but that when issues arise that clearly have an impact on all three groups, that they would work together with a representative sampling from those groups to, to address the issue. So it has accomplished the same thing. It's just issue specific. The bad news is the SCSC has lost all the Santa Cruz members. So it's now going to just be SC. I think Santa Clara. But so a lot playing out on that front. And then the final meeting this week was one that Jeremy was part of as well because he was a member, as was Laura, and that was our first meeting of the ad hoc housing review committee. And this was related to Pacific Therex's request for a CUP, a short term CUP amendment, so that they can consolidate their physical therapy in with their physical fitness all in Mr. Pollock's building, you know, which is where her primary has been. Excuse me, not Mr. Pollock's. I had said that wrong. The opposite. It's coming into
Geolages.
Yeah, exactly, Geolages. So she was unable to come to terms with the Pollocks. They had originally made a concession, series of rental concessions, but then those didn't materialize or they didn't ultimately get executed. So it left her in a really precarious financial position. And the findings of the four person committee were such that it was unanimous that they could find that those conditions could be met relative to the issuance of a temporary CUP. So I think that process worked really well because it was the chair of the planning commission, the chair of the ASCC and Jeremy and Laura that were the panelists on that. And I was listening as liaison. Yeah, great.
Did they set as the time limit on that temporary CUP?
It was five months.
Five months?
Five months. Yeah, there was, that was probably the most robust discussion was about the time period, you know, it was as long as six. And, you know, and obviously they wanted to go beyond three to give adequate time to see how all of this would play out. Because in addition to the, the financial impact of COVID, we need to have our processes back in place for a full CUP review. Exactly. So there's a lot of, lot of, you know, issues still in the air as to how that timing will all work. So that was, that was the feeling. They can always extend. You know, we, we could extend if we're just not able to fully get ramped back up in order to be able to have our normal process. And that was it.
Okay, thank you. John, go ahead.
I did not have any this last two weeks.
Okay, Craig?
I had to, let's see, we had open space acquisition on May 28th, Thursday. And they talked about a number of things. So they spent a good amount of time discussing the frog pond, Alpine Road, open space designation, conversion, et cetera. So Howard gave an update about the work that he's done out there to think about how wide of a right of way we want to maintain and what that means in terms of which pieces of land we might want to survey and designate and what designate means. So they, they had a, a good, robust discussion about that and gave Howard some, some feedback that I'm sure at some point, well, I mean, it's turning into more work for Howard that he's going to go away and then come back and, and probably bring us a plan at some point and a proposal for how to turn, I think, what we have been intending to do into a, a concrete action on, on that land there. Some discussion of fire mitigation stuff on Shady Trail, open space website update that they want to do to kind of refresh that. They have a new updated brochure and map where they have a, a brochure that has a map of all of the open space in Portola Valley, not just the town owned open space, but the relation to Windy Hill and all of the, all of the various pieces of open space in town to really, you know, remind people of all the stuff that's out there in the town, you know, the town that we all live in and, and all the open space that we enjoy. But really, when you see all of it together on one map, you really get a, a sense of one of the really special aspects of Portola Valley. And so they're looking to update the website and, and use that as a way of promoting this brochure and updated map. Inaccessible under the utilized open space properties. I think they discussed briefly, but the discussion was really along the lines of not much progress has been made there with COVID and everything else. Committee leadership, they appointed a new vice chair and I don't recall who they appointed. Sharon probably knows. And then let's see, Stanford wedge update, they didn't have anything to say there really. And then scheduling a, a report to us. So they'll be coming to us and giving us their annual update. And then the other meeting was a BPTS meeting on June 3rd. Let's see, we didn't get a sheriff's report this month. Let's see, we didn't get a sheriff's report this month, I think. I don't remember if that was one of the days when they were preparing for the riots that we all know destroyed downtown Redwood City and hired a countywide curfew. Let's see, ongoing committee business. So for a while now, the committee has been trying to work with, I think he's a Palo Alto resident about having the town write a letter of support to Caltrans, encouraging Caltrans to put bike lanes essentially on skyline. Caltrans had, so this, this citizen wanted to make a private donation to pay for it. Caltrans let them know that you can't apparently make a private donation for Caltrans projects. And that what they really needed was letters from the communities that might be impacted by such a project in support of it. And then Caltrans would consider agendizing it and thinking about doing as a project. So the committee is going to be forwarded, they probably may have forwarded already to staff and they'll probably be coming to us before a very long, a, a letter. It's very straightforward. It just says, we generally think this is a good idea. Doesn't commit us any money or any, doesn't commit us to anything. It just says this would be helpful for cyclists who end up coming through Portola Valley. So that will be coming to us. Windy Hill Parking, they're perennial topic, obviously with COVID and various park closures and all that is, is an area that they're monitoring on an ongoing basis. Some weeks it's been fine, some weeks it's been not so fine. Memorial Day, I mean, we've heard reports from staff on, on some of the issues we've had. Last weekend, I noticed it was pretty bad again. There were at least 10 cars parked in the, you know, blocking the shoulder essentially. So any bikes that were coming by would have had to go out into traffic. So I think next time that the meeting, probably if the shift, the situation continues to be the same, they'll probably ask the sheriff's deputy to step up enforcement or be more active anyway, and putting out their flyers, reminding people to keep the roadway clear. And that was about it. And then the meeting hasn't happened yet, but tomorrow is the A-Bag General Assembly Meeting, which will be conducted by Zoom, which is going to be an interesting affair. It's, it's often a fairly, well, I don't know about contentious is maybe not the right word, but participatory meeting with 110 voting members. So I'm not entirely sure how zoomable that is, but there's not a whole lot on the agenda other than budget approvals and some other minor things. There's not, no big controversial issue this year, at least that I'm aware of. So it, it may be relatively easy compared to the, the last few meetings where there has been, have been contentious issues that a number of people wanted to talk about at length and hash out. So I will report on that at our next meeting, how that, how that went, but that is happening tomorrow. Okay, and that is all I had.
Craig, Craig Taylor was nominated vice chair to open space.
Yep.
Mary Ann, go ahead.
I have two. I had a flood and sea level rise resiliency district meeting. Mostly about the budget, which is the revenue is just a little bit over the expenses. And you know, the revenue is just what the cities pay and what the county pays. And they were happy to report that they did receive all the contributions from the 20 cities. And they're going to wait a little bit before they send the next bill. They were planning to send the next bill in July, but they're going to wait a little bit, which I think is smart. I think we hired an auditor. Yeah. We, there were some changes to the salary schedule. The new CEO made those changes. And they're now going to form a subcommittee to oversee audit in the budget. So let's see if there were some reports. They're still doing the nuts and bolts of a startup. Lynn Matterman, who's our CEO, said they just contracted to do independent accounting with a, I forget what their name, contract with a consultant. And they're still meeting with banks and wrapping up all that stuff. As far as our projects, our MOUs, the Bayfront Canals, working ahead, working on four areas to get to construction. The area between Coleman and Burlingame, that Bay Shore, very, he's in conversation with the people in those cities to talk about a better approach to the regional bayside. Redwood Shores levees are getting attention. We have an RFP for Belmont Creek to do stormwater and restoration. So there's a lot going on. And they also met with SFO and Senator Hill and Mullen. And they're still in discussions in Sacramento, hoping that there's going to be an infrastructure resiliency bond, but nobody really knows. I think that's it. Yes. And then Jeff and I and Jeremy were in Jerry Hill's Housing Roundtable Zoom meeting on June 5th. And there were representatives from every city in his district. So there were a lot of people and everybody reported in on what they were doing relative to housing and/or what would be helpful for them in terms of legislation. And there was also discussion about a number of bills. I'm going to pull it out and then you two could jump in here. Let's see. There's something that they were calling the Senate Housing Production Ledge Package. And I think there were a number of, there was a bill by Atkins 995 that's a sequoia relief bill. There's a SB 902 by Weiner, allowing governments to pass a zoning ordinance that's not subject to sequel for projects that allow up to 10 units if they're located in one of the following priority areas, transit rich, jobs rich, or urban field site. We are jobs rich, just so you know. And then there was SB 1385 by Caballero that was, would unlock existing land zone for commercial office and retail for potential residential development by making housing ineligible use on those sites. There was a CHU bill, AB 3040, that incentivizes housing production by giving local governments additional RENA credits when they upzone single family parcels to allow for four units per parcel by right. There was a bill by Weiner 899 that allows faith-based institutions, independent colleges and nonprofit health facilities to build multifamily affordable housing by right, regardless of local zoning restrictions. So that would affect the church at Ladera, right? What other, do you remember? There was, oh, AB 3153 by Rivas allows residential developers to meet a portion of their parking requirements through bike and car share parking. And there's more technicality to that. Can you, Jeff, can you add anything?
There was AB 1102, which was the sort of, I think it allowed for, it wasn't duplex, it was, it was lot line adjustments, I think. That, that was discussed a little bit. People were all concerned. It's basically, it was saying you could take a lot up to a of a certain size and divide it in half, as long as it's roughly two equal sized lots for, basically turn one lot into two residential lots. And there was some concern about that. Other than that, you know, just overall, I, I think, you know, the interesting thing to, to, that we, the three of us kind of had afterwards was just the fact that, you know, people brought up their concerns and sort of what they wanted to see happen, but nobody was seriously questioning the basic premise that, you know, that we're going to be building more housing. Would you agree with that, Mary Ann? I, I think no one, people, they, they, they sort of
You're right.
Things they were concerned about, but nobody, nobody said, well, no, we just can't do this. It was sort of like, well, something's going to come down from the state. It's, we're going to have to deal with it. It's just, these were, these are things, you know, you can make it easier for us or you can make it harder for us. And it was more of just, it was, it was, the conversation had moved past kind of the what, onto the how, I guess, in a certain sense.
Yeah. Jeremy?
Yeah, I think that that's true. I was, I was, I think I'd mentioned to both of you, I was struck by the, just the tenor that, you know, three, four, five years ago, you would have had cities say, as you were saying, Jeff, we, we can't do this. It's just a very different vibe, if you will.
Yeah. So that's it, all my reports.
Okay, I had that, we were at that meeting on Friday, I guess it was. Peninsula Clean Energy, I've had a couple of meetings. The one thing I'll bring up again is I talked to staff about this and I'm told that at this, at our board meeting at the end of June, we will be approving the, I've told you about this before. This is the distributed, it's, it's basically batteries, residential, like basically Tesla power walls and other comparable batteries on residences and they become part of PCE's resource adequacy, which is one of our regulatory requirements. And that, which means that, that we would basically be subsidizing these batteries just to some extent. So I am hoping that after our June board meeting, I will be able to come back and start telling people locally that they can get a battery, a much better deal on a power wall for their house. Power wall plus solar would be even better, but you could even just have battery by itself. And so I'm hoping that this, maybe people will, will adopt the batteries as an alternative to gas generators this summer. And I'm hoping we can get this rolled out in time to basically get some things installed before the fire season, the power shut off season starts again. So I'm hoping I will have a little more update on that. I mean, I, you know, that happens, I think I'll just start broadcasting it. We won't have that July 8th meeting, but I'm hoping that by, by early July, we'll have something, we're ready to actually start advertising and, and rolling out to people. So hopefully if anyone wants to, talking about getting a generator, tell them to get a battery instead. So my, my two cents on that. That's what I had. Christie, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Yes, I was asking regarding my minutes, the two items I wanted to change on the minutes.
Christie, I'll contact you tomorrow. I know that Sharon has been emailing you over the last day regarding this, so I will talk to you tomorrow about that.
Okay, and regarding, can you clarify, Mary Ann, on the church? What's going on with the church in Ladera? You mentioned something. Are they selling land? What's go?
They have, they, one of their parcels is in the town of Portola Valley and they would like to build some affordable housing there.
So they've approached the Portola Valley?
They, yeah, they approached Portola Valley, but it's, it's their project. They will have to figure out the financing themselves. But now I don't know that they would even need our approval if this, if this bill is passed.
And what bill is that?
Let me see. It was a Weiner bill.
902? I'm sorry, go ahead.
899, SB 899.
What was, I couldn't understand you. Thus be what?
SB Senate Bill 899.
Okay. And what are the, some of the other bills, just to look at what's happening? Can you, can you reiterate?
I'm happy to email you tomorrow, the list of the bills.
Okay. And I just wanted to clarify with the ADUs in the town, are we at 220 or are we at a higher number now?
We still don't know, right? Jeremy, go ahead.
Um, if I understand your question correctly, what are the total number of, of authorized ADUs in Portola Valley? And the last number that I saw was about 212. I think that's what you're asking.
Did you say 212 or 220?
212.
212. And what's required till 2023 is 64, correct?
No, Christine, since this is off the agenda, let me contact you tomorrow on these questions, if I can.
Okay.
All right. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. This brings us to Jeremy's report. Jeremy, go ahead.
Thank you. Just two things. As you know, the library started its process of pickup. For those who would reserved items, we didn't have a lot of traffic this weekend, but the library system did fairly well. So it was exciting to see that there's some service available to people. I hope they take advantage of it. The second thing I wanted to mention, Shady Lane Trail came up a little earlier. Want to thank Howard for the work that he's been doing with the residents out there. We do expect residents a little later this month through permission from the town to access their properties from the Shady Trail to start doing some work. So I'm, I'm aware of at least one resident who's taken advantage of that. We're hoping more do. So they would enter through the Shady Trail and go to the back ends of their property to do the vegetation management work that's so needed there. So appreciate Howard's commitment to that. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, any questions for Jeremy? All right then, we're on to the digests. May 28th, anything to pull? Okay, uh, June 4th, anything to be pulled? All right. If there's nothing else, then I believe we are done. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for, for
Good night.
Night.
Take care, everybody.
Bye.